Counsel will be in order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present. Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Perez absent. Counselor Whitfield.
Present.
Present. Counselor Govan.
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present. Counselor Click Bruce.
Present.
Present. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present. Counselor Kern.
Present.
Present. Counselor Davila.
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman.
Present. Will counsel and guests please rise and join us in a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. Before we begin tonight, let the record reflect that Counselor Hurst and Counselor Kern are participating in the proceedings remotely. And allow me to begin this evening by congratulating all the members of the Springfield City Council who were re-elected last Tuesday. Please know that your service is appreciated and we're glad you'll be continuing it. We are also joined this evening by our two new city councilors-elect, at-large, former city councillor, now councillor-elect Brian Santinello, and councillor-elect Jose Delgado. And at this time, I would like to call upon the dean of the city council, City Councillor Caterie Walsh, to escort the gentlemen to their seats here to my right. At this time, are there any reports of committee? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a report of the Finance Committee. We met today. The Finance Committee met at 5:30 this afternoon. In attendance were Counselor Walsh, Counselor Govan, Counselor Click Bruce, Counselor Fenton. That was it. Sorry if I missed anybody. Counselor-elect, Counselor Whitfield came on, that's right, and Counselor-elect Delgado and Counselor-elect Santinello. We had a 16-minute or 16-item Finance Committee meeting, and we approved everything. At the end, we, there were a lot of somewhat easy items. There were two or three that required some discussion. And at the end, there was one contract settlement offer. Counselor Govan was on the whole time, as was I. She made a motion to approve all the items, and I seconded it. Counselor Whitfield, I think, liked some of the things she heard, but she wasn't on the whole time, so she didn't want to vote on things she hadn't heard about. So, most of what we talked about, as I was strewn through this agenda, was 16 items. There's 24 items. So, a lot of this stuff has been talked about in the committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any further reports of committee? Seeing no further reports of committee at this time, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on accepting the reports.
On accepting the reports, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Perez absent. Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman.
Yes. The votes are sufficient. The reports are accepted. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
The first item is the September Revenue versus Expenditure Report.
Mr. Caffo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'm presenting the September Revenue versus Expenditure Report. Represents the first quarter of the fiscal year. I wanted to point out that the city and the school department has finalized the net school spending shortfall figure for fiscal year '24. It is $21,189,000. I also wanted to announce that the Massachusetts Department of Revenue certified the city's free cash for fiscal year 2023 this afternoon. The certification was $19.3 million. Of that $19.3, there is a $1.5 million in opiate settlements. These funds are restricted, and we'll be coming forward with an appropriation order to put these in a special purpose fund. We're waiting on some more guidance from the State Department of Revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Caffo. Are there any questions? Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pat, I know that there is about $19 million of free cash that will be certified free cash, so I'm wondering if you all are having any discussion on using that free cash to reduce any property tax bills that may come out? Is that under consideration?
There's a, first meeting is Thursday of the Tax Rate Setting Committee, and I expect that subject to come up.
Okay. I was just wondering if there were any internal discussions yet.
We just received a certification today, but I'm sure we'll be having some prior to Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Are there any further questions for the Caffo on the report or debate amongst the council? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance of the report.
On acceptance of the report, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Perez absent. Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila. Away, Counselor Letterman.
Yes. The votes are sufficient. The report is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item two.
Item two is to change the zoning of properties known as North Side Williams Street from Residence C to Business A. This is a zone change referral vote.
Shall be considered read and referred. Madam Clerk, please call item three.
Item three is a petition for Eversource Gas on Ormond Street.
Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
Good night, Mr. President. This Hector Velez, 1956 Parker Street.
Mr. Velez, the floor is yours.
I think so that third, the petition from Eversource Gas is the same project. It has to do with the X intersection, new project, new bill with Mass Dad. They're gonna replace the gas iron pipe to plastic and upgrade the medium pressure. DPW requests to all the utilities to update or install whatever utility they need before the construction of the X. And that's one of the Eversource Gas projects they're gonna install and replace. All the side street and sub manner avenue before the update of that intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. And if there's no objection, can you also speak to Cliftwood Street, Trenton Street, and Standish Street?
Well, is that, I don't have the paper with me, the agenda here.
Those would be items four, five, and six.
Yeah. They are the same project. They have to do with the sub manner avenue, sub manner, the X intersection project. They have to replace of the gas pipe before the construction.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Velez on the petitions, items three through six? If there's no further questions or discussion, is there a motion to take items three through six together?
Motion.
Motion was made by Counselor Govan. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Is there any discussion on the motion to take the items together? Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on taking the items together. Then we'll take a vote on the items.
On taking items three through six together, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Perez absent. Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kern.
Yes.
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 Yes. Counselor Letterman.
Yes. The votes are sufficient. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on items three through six approval.
On approving items three through six, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Perez absent. Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman.
Yes. The votes are sufficient. The petitions are approved. Before we proceed to the next item, I received information that it seems that the live broadcast is not functioning. Can we confirm that we are live on both the Focus Springfield Community Access Channel All right. We should be up now. Madam Clerk, can you please call item seven?
Item seven is a petition for an honorary street sign for E. Henry Twigs.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As the originator of the petition, I'm gonna call Council Vice President Edwards to the
President Letterman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It's my distinct honor this evening to cede you the gavel in introduction of this item, which is a petition to rename Westminster Street for our colleague, the late Ward Forest City Councillor, E. Henry Twigs. And I think that, you know, one of the greatest joys of public service and community work is the people that we get to meet. And we meet a lot of folks in this line of service, but I think that every once in a while, we meet somebody who is truly special. And E. Henry Twigs, for so many of us, was one of those people, not just for us. He was one of those people for thousands of individuals here in the city of Springfield, one of those people for thousands of individuals across the Commonwealth, and even across the United States of America. And so, as I prepare to leave this body at the end of this year, I wanted to think of a way that we could properly pay tribute to his many contributions here in our city, in our Commonwealth, and our country. And I spoke with two individuals not unfamiliar to this body, his son, Antonio Deleslin, who's with us tonight with his lovely wife, and of course, our great friend and love of Henry's life, Mrs. Karen Twigs, who we affectionately often referred to as the 14th councillor for all of the support that she provided to our colleague later on in his life. And what we arrived at was the idea to bring forward this honorary sign at Westminster Street. You know, Westminster Street was where Counselor Twigs called home for over 20 years. The home is still in the Twigs family. And so, we brought that forward to the McKnight Neighborhood Council, where we received unanimous support. Amila and I went out and flyered Westminster Street personally, and certainly heard no objections from the residents there. And we also recently received unanimous support from the Springfield Traffic Commission. And so, we're here tonight to take a final vote on honoring Counselor Twigs, honoring Counselor Twigs for the work that he did as a civil rights activist, honoring Counselor Twigs for the work that he did as a housing developer, honoring Counselor Twigs for the work that he did in the Democratic Party here in our city, in our Commonwealth, in our country, and honoring Counselor Twigs for the work that he did on the Springfield City Council. You know, earlier tonight, one of our reporters asked me, you know, what made Henry Twigs such remarkable individual for so many people? And what I said to them was, you know, Counselor Twigs served here for 10 years, and he finished his term, finished his life sitting in that seat right over there. But what so many people remember Counselor Twigs for, in addition to what he did in office, is what he did out of office. I think a lot of people don't realize that Henry Twigs was not elected to public office until he was 70 years old. He wasn't elected to public office when he walked across the Pettis Bridge with Dr. Martin Luther King. He wasn't elected to public office when he fought for housing for individuals here in the city of Springfield. He wasn't elected to public office when he campaigned alongside changemakers in the city of Springfield. But he understood the role that every single one of us had to play in our democracy. And he understood that our democracy was a tool for justice. And so, when Counselor Twigs passed away, and we all gathered for his funeral, I asked members of the city council to rise. And I asked members of the city council to recognize that we now had a job to do. We had to carry on the work that Counselor Twigs did. But we really should extend that to all the people in our community, whether we're in office, out of office, working in politics, working in community organizations, or just doing the best that we can in our day-to-day lives. And the final thing that I'll say about Counselor Twigs, and I know many will want to speak tonight on what he contributed to our community, is he never took a step back from the next generation. He was always there to reach back and to bring them along with him. He understood the importance of making sure that the next generation of leaders was ready to lead. And actually, when he passed away holding the seat, he had already announced that he was not running for reelection to the city council. He stepped aside so that a new generation could lead. And so, it's such an honor to have known him, such an honor to have campaigned beside him, to have served here with him, as so many of us did, and it's an honor to bring forward this tribute to his legacy today. And, Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, as I mentioned, Counselor Twigg's son, Antonio Deleslin, is here with us today, and I think we would all benefit from hearing his remarks before we proceed.
Mr. Deleslin, would you like to come to the microphone, please? Welcome to the chamber.
Good evening. Most of you I know for years as my father was a councilman. I know my dad would be proud, humbled at the notion that you all would want to do this for him. My dad, he spoke loud, but he really was a soft gentleman at heart. If I could be half the man my father, I would be grateful for that. But, I mean, when Jesse mentioned this, it was just something I really couldn't have, would never imagine. But I told my stepmom Karen about it, and she was thrilled. So, I'm just here in behalf of my family, knowing the work that my dad put in. It's really an honor for you all to even consider that. Thank you all, and I know my dad is smiling down on all of you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I first want to thank my colleague, Counselor Letterman, for putting this together, the work that you've done on the council, not just as a city councillor, but I think you've probably been one of the most impressive city councillor presidents that I've ever seen. So, I commend you for your work, and I assure you I will miss you. When it comes to Henry, I want to say, Henry was, he was a person who told it how it was and was a fighter. Now, some people might not have liked the things he might have said some, once in a while, but I can assure you, his heart was still just fighting for the community. And when it came to the community, the community loved him. Now, when I was 18, 19-years-old, Henry believed in me and my family. That's when we started. My sister, Shalon Brown, ran for mayor, and Henry was the one who believed in us. He was the one who fought for us. He was the one who gave us all our shots. And I say, that was 30-years ago. See, I can remember Henry. And one thing about Henry, one thing you gotta understand, I spoke to Henry before I decided to run. And it wasn't that Henry didn't support me. Me and Henry relationship was, he was a fighter. He said, "You young boys, y'all not gonna get this without a fight." And I believe Henry would have, you know, if help would have permitted him, he would have continued to serve. I mean, and he did continue to serve. And one thing I just want to say is that he is a definite role model of mine, a mentor of mine, and I know that I wouldn't have been here. Instead of breaking us down, he's never said anything bad about me. The only thing he's ever done was build me up. He doesn't always agree with me, but he's always supported me. So, I want to thank Henry and his family, and that's it.
Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you, Mr. President, for bringing this forward. I agree with Counsel Brown. E. Henry Twigs was one of my, I would say, I had him on a pedestal because of the social racial justice and social justice work that he had done all his life. Even before he came on the city council, me being a social justice community organizer, he came to my heart. You know, whenever I talked to him, it was, you know, about moving the movement forward. And that's what we have to continue to keep doing. So, I'm glad that, I know that this street is going to be named in his name. I want to thank the family for sharing him with us all those years. And I'm in full support of this because, you know, we have to, as a city, be reminded of our social justice warriors and how the fight has to continue. So, thank you so much.
Counselor Click Bruce.
Thank you, Vice President. Thank you, Counsel President Letterman, for bringing this forward. Real quick story with E. Henry Twigs. I know this recently came out with the $2 bills. I guess it's worth a lot of money now. 21-years ago, I came to my wedding, and he was dancing with my wife and passed out all these $2 bills. So, true gentleman, real close to my family. I actually wanted to speak on behalf of my dad and just say, he's been a true gem to the Click Bruce family. And I thank Antonio and his wife for sharing him with all of us. But Henry Twigs was a great man, a giant of a man, and he advocated for those less fortunate and made sure the community was at heart. So, again, thank you, Counsel President, for doing that, and rest in peace, Henry Twigs.
Counsel Fenton. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you, Mr. President, for bringing this forward. Antonio and your family, Karen, if you're watching at home, thank you for sharing your loved one with us for so many years. Henry meant a great deal to me. He was a friend and a mentor, and something that Counsel Brown said really struck a chord with me, which is that he was always building up young people and the next generation. And I met Henry for the first time, I was 22-years-old and running for office, and I didn't, I had never really been involved in politics or anything like that before. And Henry really took me under his wing, started coming to my events, and over the course of the years that followed, became a real mentor of mine on this council. He was always a gentleman in every context, and incredibly smart and astute on every issue. The number of times that I've found myself sitting in this chamber or participating in council business since we lost him and asking myself, what would he have to say about this debate? It's been many, many times, many, 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 many times. And I miss him dearly as my friend and gone over and listening to him tell me what he thought I needed to do on Westminster Street or going out to lunch with him. And he was an incredible asset, not just to this council, but to our entire community. And I'm just thrilled that we'll have the ability to honor him in this small way, and I know he would be incredibly proud of this honor. I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I follow what all my colleagues are saying to you, President Letterman, for bringing this forward. I'm so happy to support this because not only was Henry a colleague, but he was my friend. And we had so many wonderful experiences together, going to democratic meetings and state conventions and supporting John Kerry. And one thing that hasn't been said, but Henry had a great sense of humor. He was a lot of fun to be with. He didn't hesitate to tell you what you should be doing right. But I remember interviewing Henry for a cable program that I used to run, and he talked about his civil rights experiences, and I felt I was in the presence of greatness. I was with someone who had walked with Dr. Martin Luther King, and it's always made such a great impression on me. Henry walked the walk, but he also talked the talk. He was genuine. He was sincere, and he's an icon in the city of Springfield. I'm more than happy to support this, but I think you gotta put Karen's name on the sign, too.[1602.51][1602.51](laughter)
Counsel Whitfield.
I remember interviewing him. That was a long one. Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't know Counselor Twigs that well, but the times that I did meet him, he was amazing, and he was just tell it like it is, right? So, anything you asked him, if you wanted a true answer, he would give it to you whether you liked it or not. He was actually the first one in this chambers that challenged me, and yeah, I stood up to it. But he was the first one that gave me my courage to be able to speak my truth, and I will always respect that. I was at your wedding, too, and I didn't get a $2 bill, so I'm wondering if Counselor Click took it from me, Click Bruce, but I didn't get that $2 bill, and I wish I had it right now, because from what we're hearing, it'd be worth a lot. But Mr. Twigs is an amazing man. He spoke his truth. He fought for racial and social justice, and I wish he was also here to help combat this homelessness that he always fought for, and that's why he has a whole complex named after him of affordable housing to help folks that really need it in this community. He took properties that he could have very well sold or made, you know, market rate and changed them into affordable housing in the community that I grew up in, and I will always honor and respect that. And I want to say thank you to his family also for sharing them with us. We definitely appreciate it. It's really hard sharing your family in politics, and so, for those who do, we take our hats off to you as well. So, thank you.
Counsel Davila.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I think that this is quite a befitting tribute to a giant, a giant here in the city, a man who, in my opinion and no doubt, has indeed shaped not only the city by his endless activism and work, but also this humble, wise chambers. I cannot stop thinking that when I first got elected, he was sitting in chair number six, yeah, number six. And the tribute that was paid to him, well, we have a picture and we had some flowers. It was really, to me, touching. And I knew that, as a young man, those are hard shoes to fill, extremely hard shoes to fill. And the interaction that I had with him early on, when I first got involved into activism and politics, he sat me down once, and he looked at me, and he says, "No matter what happens, Victor, you have to fight. You have to fight." And those words were later echoed by my mentor, the great and intrepid Dave Vignot. And so, I think it's quite a befitting tribute for a man, again, that shaped our city, our chambers, but also to the best-dressed councillor that this body has ever seen.[1791.63][1791.63](applause) And he topped it off with a good-looking hat. And he topped it off with a good-looking hat. You know, it's truly, Antonio, it is truly my pleasure to bow for this. It is quite an honor. And your father is truly a giant. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. You know, when we take the Pledge of Allegiance and we say the Pledge of Allegiance, which we probably haven't said since elementary school or something, some words resonate with that, you know, truth, justice, the American way, all that stuff. You know, the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm saying things that I said by rote years ago. And all of a sudden, you're on a government body and you're saying it for real. Like you have something to do with those things. And when I looked across at Henry, I just felt like not only am I saying the Pledge of Allegiance, but I'm in the presence of a great man who lived his life in support of freedom and justice and all the people I could see. You know, and the cool things about being on the council, and you know, Brian and Jose will get this experience now, is meeting all the people that you wouldn't meet in your normal life. And to me, that was just kind of an eye-opener to me. And I looked across at Henry in seat six and said, "Man, how did I get in a room with this guy?" And unfortunately, early in his tenure, their first year, he had physical issues. And I can't remember. We know that he had physical issues a lot of the time. But right in that first two or three months, you know, when you go to visit someone in the hospital, you're like, should I go? Am I close enough to the family to go, to be a visitor, et cetera? And I decided I was close enough. And I just went. And I had the best hospital visit, one of the best ones of my life. We talked about everything. He was so glad I had come. We talked about everything, families, marriages, all that stuff, plus the civil rights movement, being in a room with MLK and being part of that whole process. I had taken a civil rights tour in my life because I've always been mesmerized by the civil rights movement. And I was meeting with someone who had been to those places when they were really creating history, not just celebrating what was. Henry meant an awful lot to me as a friend, as a role model, as someone to just look up to and say, "I can't believe that this guy, that I get a chance to be with this person who has done so much." To honor the humanity of, it didn't matter, he's a city counselor. We're all that. And we're happy to be it. We're lucky to be in it. But also, what Henry's status was was that he was just a first-class, top-notch human being that we got a chance to be around. And I appreciate your move, Jesse, to put this out there. Thanks for the support of the family, Antonio, et cetera. I'm proud to be part of this crew that celebrated and served with Henry Twigs.
Attorney Shea?
When I got elected to the city council, I had already spent 24, 26 years on the school committee. And my phone rings one day, and it's Henry Twigs. And he says, "You know, Ken Shea, he says, 'You and I have been both involved in government for a long time, all our lives, and our paths have never actually crossed.'" He says, "So I want to take you out to lunch next week. And we're going to go downtown and have lunch and get to know each other." And that was the start of a great friendship and a great learning experience. And when it came time to get a seat here on the city council, as the councilors know, you have to draw numbers or seat numbers. And the first time we did it, we wound up sitting next to each other right over here somewhere. And one of the great things about sitting next to Henry was he had a drawer full of candy. And I had never eaten anything at a public meeting before, but I want to tell you, I munched my way through. I don't know how many pounds of those Werther's cough drops that they pass out and other chocolates. And to keep the story short, every year that we got to do seats, we always wound up next to each other. And the last year, the furthest apart we were is I think Henry was where Tim Allen is sitting and I was where Marlo Brown is. So the candy passing got a little awkward as one of us, we get, I would usually get up and go over and get some candy from him. But it was great working with him. And I learned a lot of lessons. And we didn't always agree on the issues, by the way. We didn't always vote the same way. And I remember one time I had something and he leaned over and I knew that he and I were not on the same page. And he said, "Have you got the votes?" And I said, "You know, I don't know, Henry. I might be one vote short. I'm not sure." Well, sure enough, when they called out the votes, wouldn't you know, Henry, who had been opposing me on this, voted for it. And I thought, "Wow, that's pretty good." We were friends and we talked about it. But you know, politics is funny. Wasn't too long later, four or five months later, once again, we're on the opposite sides of something. And same thing, Henry says, "You know, I'm a little short here, Ken." I said, "Don't worry about it." Votes came in, and sure enough, I voted with him. And no more was ever said about it. We just nodded and smiled at each other and went on from there. And I think that's a great lesson that all of us could learn. And I think that, one more story, and then I'll make my final point. But I went to an event in Springfield one time where they were honoring your father. There probably was 100 people there. And just like tonight, they let people speak as to what they thought of Henry. And there must have been 20 speakers. And every one of them got up and they made a long pitch about how great Henry was and stories. And I was the last person. They called me up and I thought, I said, "You know, 20 people. You've said just about everything you can say about Henry. I don't think I can add anything to it. But I'll tell you, I'm going to sum it up and make it a lot quicker than some of you were." And I said, "You know what? Henry is just a damn good fellow." And I think he smiled with that, and so did his wife. And he was. But I just want to pass this on to all of you here in the room and everyone. And Henry believed this, that he believed that compromise is the essence of the democratic process. And in politics, there's often times when we can dig in our heels. But I learned from Henry that compromise is what moves things forward in government. And so none of us should dig our heels in so much that we're not willing to, you know, make compromises here and there. Because as he said, "Democracy, you don't get everything at once." Democracy moves in small steps, but small steps consistently. And that's how we get to where we need to go. Henry, you're going to be missed. But as I said once before, Henry, you're just were a damn good fellow. Thank you.
Are there any other counselors with comments? Seeing none, I guess it's my turn. So I get to be the last one. Approximately 15 years ago, I was approached by a former aide to Gail Canderas by the name of Darla Justice, who asked me to consider running for city council under a new system. I didn't have a political background. And as many people like to coin the phrase that they didn't come from a political family, well, I didn't either. My mom was a Pentecostal minister. And most of my uncles knew the police, but they didn't know them for the right reasons. So as I prayed on it and thought about it and giggled and laughed about the possibility, I created a list of people that I needed to have counsel from before I took that step. Only one of them still survives to this day. And his name is Garmesindo Gomez. The other person that I went to see next was a man named Frank Bunton. And then I went to see a woman by the name of Michael Ann Beswazy. The last person that I went to go see was a gentleman by the name of E. Henry Twigs. I stand on the shoulders of some great people. And it is particular honor for me to stand here to say thank you to his family for sharing him with us. I didn't get to meet many civil rights icons as I was growing up. But I came up at a time when, you know, young children were supposed to be seen and not heard. So my mother would affectionately allow for me to sit under the dining room table while she would argue, "Should we be following Malcolm or should we be following Martin?" So when I got to learn a little bit about Henry's past and the fact that he had walked the Edward Pedestrian Bridge and that he had known and rubbed shoulders with so many iconic individuals of the civil rights movement, it was almost awe-inspiring just to be in his presence. As my colleague made reference to, he was a well-dressed man. I always looked forward to coming to the chamber to see how that suit was being hung off them shoulders. Sadly, he left us too soon. But his memory still exists to this day. And I know I'm not everybody's cup of tea. My style is a little assertive and aggressive sometimes and even inappropriate at times with my mouth. But Henry Twigs always had a sympathetic ear, good advice, and sound counsel for me. So I'm going to cede gavel back to the president of the council so that he can have the honor of counting the vote. But I see that a hand has been risen in the queue. So before I do that, I'm going to just simply say that it's been a real pleasure to know E. Henry Twigs. It was a pleasure to stand in this chamber and serve with him. And his memory lives with me and through me. Thank you to his family. Thank you to all my colleagues who had the pleasure of serving with him. And may we do the best that we can do to make him proud as we move forward, welcoming our new colleagues, saying goodbye to our old colleagues. And may we all be blessed with wisdom. Thank you. Finally, I'd like to turn the microphone over to and recognize Counselor Justin Hurst. Counselor Hurst?
I appreciate you, Mr. President. I actually wasn't going to say anything today for a variety of different reasons. And it's interesting how, you know, the legacy of E. Henry Twigs continues to move individuals. What I will tell you all is that Henry could call the question like no one in the chamber. And for those of you who don't know what "call the questions" means, it's our newer counselors ask someone. But when Henry would call the questions, I'd sit back and be like, "What's going on? I still have more to say." But Henry knew that when it's time for closure, it's time for closure. And so in honor of E. Henry Twigs, to the extent that no one has anything else to say, I'd like to call the questions. And I'm hopeful that folks will continue E. Henry Twigs' legacy in this fight for justice, as I know I will.
Appropriately said. I cede gavel to the president. Thank you.
That was good. We're going to proceed. Counselor Hurst's motion to call the question. And Counsel Twigs would point out...
You don't have to, Mr. President.
We're going to proceed to Counselor Hurst's motion to call the question. Before we do so, Counselor Allen, some years ago, gifted me this photo of Counsel Twigs. And I've had it here all these years. I'm going to turn it around because if anybody was thinking of voting against his honorary sign petition, he would want you to look at him while you did it. But with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to call the question.
On the motion to call the question, Counsel Walsh.
Absolutely.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez, absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Goban?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes. The votes being sufficient, question is now called. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the naming of Westminster Street for Ward Force City Councilor E. Henry Twigs.
On approval of the petition, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez, absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Goban?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes. The votes being sufficient and unanimous, the petition is approved. Madam Clerk, without objection, please add all counselors as a sponsor of that petition. And please call item eight.
Item eight is bond authorization for two fire apparatus in the amount of $3,290,000.
And Madam Clerk, there's just one issue that I neglected. I would like to take a brief two-minute recess to invite the Twigs family forward for a photo with the city council. And Commissioner Calvi on item eight, the bond authorization.
Good evening, counselors. B.J. Calvi, Springfield Fire Department. I'm here tonight to talk about this bond. This will enable us to purchase two new pieces of fire apparatus. We're going out for a bond this time because fire apparatus is increasing at about 2% per quarter. And the delivery times are 30 months for an engine at this point and 48 months for a ladder truck. So the further we wait to order this, the more the price increases. While we were preparing this bond, they changed the motor specifications with the new EPA regulations. And there were 28, 2024 motors left. We tried to get in the queue to get two of those. And we were unable to get this done in time to get that benchmark met. By missing those motors, the price of these units went up $150,000 apiece with the new motor and transmission combinations. So to try to keep the prices down and make everything functional on the vehicle replacement program, we need to go to a bond system to purchase these two apparatus so we can secure contracts, to secure pricing, and lock in our pricing instead of waiting two and three years for these leases to come up. So what we can, we're looking at now is having this bond in place so we can sign purchase and sale agreements to get these pieces of apparatus in the queue and then save the price increases as we move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any questions? Counsel Whitfield?
My question is for the Caffo.
Mr. Caffo?
Thank you, Pat. I just wanted to know where we are as far as our bond capacity. Do we have some bonds that got paid off? Just wanted to know that.
Right now, we have debt outstanding of approximately $219 million. We also have some debt that's been authorized, but we have not sold the paper yet on those. And that's, it includes our pension obligation bonds, which are $750 million. So that amount is $933 million. But that pension obligation bonds, don't have any plans to move forward with that right now. So we do have some debt outstanding at this point. We're well within our debt capacity.
Do you know what that is, like our debt capacity?
The debt, inside the debt limit is 10% of the total amount of value of property in the city. So as of the last tax rate, that was about $539 million.
And you said we're at 219?
That's just debt inside the debt limit. We have debt that's outside the debt limit, doesn't count towards that. And I believe the ratio is about 50/50 on that. So I think the debt inside the debt limit right now is about $119 million.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Are there any further questions or deliberation? Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a statement. I want to thank the commissioner and everyone who protects and serves. I want to say you do an excellent job. And we can never do enough to give you the services and supplies that you guys need. and supplies that you guys need. So I definitely commend you personally and the work that you guys do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Are there any further questions or deliberation? Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have some question for the Commissioner, but if I may, Commissioner, I want to ask, I want to make sure that I heard the Caffo correctly, if I may, Mr. President.
Mr. Caffo?
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Caffo. Good to see you again. I want to make sure that I heard you correctly. You say that we currently have $119 million in debt in bond? Is that correct?
Yes, we have outstanding debt of $219 million that we've actually sold debt on.
119.
219.
Oh, 219, okay, so, okay, 219. And you say $750 million have been authorized but not spent as of yet.
That would be for pension obligation bonds. That's a study we did a few years ago, and it was decided not to move forward on that. That bond is still authorized.
Yeah, I remember voting for that myself, yeah.
We did not have it rescinded, but that's inflating the number that's outstanding.
Does that particular bond authorization of $750 million has an expiration date?
No, we would have to come back and rescind that. It's going to remain authorized unless it's rescinded by a council vote.
Okay. And you say that the total capacity is $539 million that we could possibly bond?
Yes, that's based on last year's taxable value in the city that naturally is going to change coming up in the next month or so.
Got you. All right, thank you, Caffo. Very kind of you. Commissioner, good evening, sir. So you can answer one question already. We are purchasing this outright, correct?
We are securing this bond so we have an option. So what I really need to do is get contracts entered into, and then when we get to the point one year out, we can either pay for them fully with the bond or at least purchase them, depending on what their rates are.
Okay. And you say that it's about 30 months out to deliver?
30-month delivery on an engine and 48 months on a ladder truck.
That's a long time. That's a very long time. Well, I was shocked to hear that, to be honest with you. So are these going to be replacing a specific district, or do we have a location to this already?
The engine will go to the north end at Engine 7, and the tower truck we're talking about here will go to Truck 1 downtown.
It will stay in the headquarters here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and so there will be no issue with manpower because all we do is replacing?
Yeah, we're replacing. So before COVID, you could get a engine built in nine and a half to 10 months, and you could get a ladder truck built in 11 months. So it was easy to project purchases and prices and things like that. Well, now, at 30 and 48 months out respectively, you're seeing a 2% price increase every quarter post-COVID. So the price is continuing to go up, and the lead times are so long, it's really skewing our replacement program.
I got you. I got you. That's kind of a new normal now, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on authorization of $3.2 million in bonding. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
On authorization of the bond, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez. Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, votes sufficient, bond is authorized.
Thank you, councilors. Have a good evening.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, please call item nine.
Item nine is for a bond authorization for school boiler projects in the amount of
Director Sullivan?
Good evening, councilors. About a year ago, we came before this body to approve a long list of potential grant applications with the MSBA, and they chose these two projects from Milton Bradley and Rebecca Johnson School to upgrade the boilers at those two schools.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions relative to the bond? Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I want to commend you, Pat, for always being proactive and responsive toward four. This is something that Principal Sutton, who's over there doing a fantastic job, is greatly needed and supported. So I definitely thank you for always supporting us, and it's definitely needed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Counsel Brown. Let the record reflect that Counsel Curran disconnected virtually. Oh, he's back on. All right, never mind. Are there any further questions for the Director? Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you, Pat. Can you tell me what schools or schools is going to be getting this bond?
Milton Bradley and Rebecca Johnson.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Milton Bradley and Rebecca Johnson.
Milton Bradley, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on bond authorization. Two-thirds vote is required.
On authorizing the bond, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez. Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the bond is authorized. Item 10, please.
Item 10 is a bond authorization for Neil Indian Orchard Community Park in the amount of $1,610,690.
Director Sullivan?
Yes, we're proud to present this to the council tonight. We were successful in a very highly competitive grant application at the federal level for the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Park Program, and Neil Park was selected. I want to thank the East Springfield and the Indian Orchard Citizen Council. They really came forward with a lot of support letters, and I think that's what brought this, and we were only, the only park system in the Commonwealth chosen for this award.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Oh, Counsel Whitfield?
More of a comment to Pat. I remember, what, last year or the year before, we walked through the park. That's Plastic Park, right?
Yeah, yeah.
An old plastic park.
Yeah, we got it, yeah.
And you said, we're going to get this money, and we're going to redo this park. So I'm really happy that you wrote, your team wrote the grant and with the support from the neighborhood councils that we're about to get started. That's exciting.
Thank you.
I just wanted to tell you, great work, great work all the time.
Counsel Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to reiterate what I said in the Finance Committee meeting, and that Commissioner Sullivan has been diligent in working on getting these parks back online, and I'm really appreciative. And I'm really excited that the entryway to the park is going to be looked at by DPW because that's been a sore spot because of traffic and trying to get in and out. I'm just excited to see what it's going to be. So thank you again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Govan. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on authorizing the bond. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
On authorizing the bond, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez. Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the bond is authorized. Madam Clerk, item 11, please.
Item 11 is for Parks Department LWCF grant, Congressman Neil Indian Orchard Community Park, in the amount of $1,500,000.
Director Sullivan, welcome back.
Yeah, so this must be for the bond for the Neil grant?
The last one was the bond, this is the grant.
Yeah, so same update. It's the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Park Program through Land and Water, federal grant administered by the National Park Service, and we're just proud that we were selected as the only grant in Massachusetts to be chosen for this award.
Just for clarification, this is the grant, and the last bond was the match.
Okay.
Are there any questions on the grant? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on accepting the grant.
On accepting the grant, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez. Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the grant's accepted. Madam Clerk, item 12, please.
Item 12 is for Parks Department LWCF grant for Gordonville Park in the amount of $1,000,000.
Patrick Sullivan?
Again, Counsel, we were so proud to be chosen. It's another federal grant. This is just the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program administered again by the National Park Service. We've been working with Bike Walk Springfield for a few years, and this is to construct a skate park at Gordonville Park. It will also honor the legacy of the Gordonville family who donated this land, which will include an arboretum, garden areas, playgrounds, splash pads. So it's going to be a great park project and the first skate park, formal skate park in the city of Springfield.
Thank you, Director Sullivan. Are there any questions? Seeing no further questions, Madam Clerk, without objection, please call the roll on accepting the grant.
On accepting the grant, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez. Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, item 13, please.
Item 13 is for a bond authorization for the Gordonville Park in the amount of $1,000,000.
Mr. Sullivan?
This is the, would be the match required for this grant, and I would look forward to your support as it's going to be a very important initiative to build this skate park for the city.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions on the bond? Seeing no further questions, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
On approval of the bond, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez. Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient and the bond is authorized. Madam Clerk, item 14?
Item 14 is for a Parks Department park grant for the Harriet Tubman Park in the amount of $500,000.
Pat, I'm going to get you a seat up here.
Yeah, this is the last one for tonight. I indicated in the subcommittee, this one dates back to when Counsel Lex Antinello was on the Park Commission. We've been working with the Old Hill Neighborhood Council for a number of years on a master plan for Harriet Tubman Park, and we were finally selected for a Commonwealth PRC grant program. It will include new playground, picnic tables, basketball, and just improved recreation facilities. I'm thrilled for the Old Hill Neighborhood because they really worked hard and waited a long time for this park improvement.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be remiss if I didn't speak on this matter. This was a park that I grew up in, in the inner city as a child. I recall plenty of times, I grew up on Hickory and Eastern Ave where, as young kids, we'd play basketball, and I recall there were times where there were gunshots, and people would run and try to go and fight. And then I had the older kids who would say, no, Malo, you ain't going here. You're not coming. Like, they always raised us to do the right thing. And in the morning time, there was a water shop park right there, and I used to have to walk across the trestle because then I had to go into a private school. And in that private school, there wasn't too many people of color there. And I came across a Pat Sullivan, and I can assure you, a lot of us did, and he supported us. And he never, like, made us all feel like we were no, like we belonged. Not only did we not belong, we deserved to be there. I remember being a lifeguard from Pat Sullivan. I want to thank you, Pat, for being a mentor to me back a long time ago in Cathedral High School. I don't want to age you, but...
Well, thank you, Counselor.
But I can assure you...
I'm glad I didn't fire you.
You should have fired all of us. But I want to assure you that you've been a mentor to a lot of us, and a lot of times, being in an environment at that time, it felt, you knew you were out of place sometimes because of your skin color, and you had to fight a little harder to be, not to be accepted, but to let them know that you belong there more than anybody. And I can assure you, Pat, you were one of the people who gave me the strength every day to hang in there and keep going. So I commend you, Pat, and...
Well, thank you.
Thank you for the part, brother.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything.
Thank you, Counsel Brown.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on accepting the grant.
On accepting the grant, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez. Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item fifteen.
Item fifteen is for a PEG access and cable-related fund FY24 franchise fee payment in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
Deputy Caffo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lindsey Hackett, Deputy Caffo, AD Tamarack Drive in Springfield. We've come to you recently with the first quarter quarterly revenue of the franchise fee from Comcast. This is the second quarter, just over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This will appropriate the funding to Focus Springfield to allow for continued PEG access and cable-related costs.
Thank you, Deputy. Are there any questions or deliberation amongst the council? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approving the payment, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the fee payment is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item sixteen.
Item sixteen is for Mass Heal Grant Increase, No Match Required, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Commissioner Colton Harris.
Good evening, Counselors. This is a grant that the Department of Health and Human Services has. It is from Boston Medical Center. It is a research grant. It ends December 31st, 2023. This funding will fund some of our contract partners that we needed to extend their work. Bay State, New North Citizens Council, Mercy, and Tapestry. This, our Recovery Coach funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any questions or deliberation amongst the council? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on accepting the grant.
On accepting the grant, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Counselor Curran?
Away, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Counselor Davila, yes?
Yes.
Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, without objection, please take item nineteen out of order for the Commissioner.
Item nineteen is an HHS American Rescue Plan Act Grant, No Match Required, in the amount of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
Commissioner Colton Harris.
Thank you very much, Council President. I appreciate you taking it out of order. This is a grant from the Health Services Resource Administration. It's a federal grant through our Homeless Health Center. The purpose is to transport individuals who are homeless to vaccine clinics to be able to get their vaccinations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any questions or deliberation amongst the council? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance of the grant.
On acceptance of the grant, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran? Away, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item seventeen.
Item seventeen is the FY24 Municipal Road Safety Grant, No Match Required, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Derek Cook, Lieutenant, Springfield Police, Forty-Hartness Ave.
Floor is yours.
Hey, how you doing? So, this grant, it's a competitive grant, funding of a part of a 5.5 million program. It deals with strictly traditional traffic enforcement, safety programs. And this one in particular does six. It's wintered impaired driving, distracted driving, click it or ticket. We have two-speed enforcements, and then there's summer impaired driving. This is total, the total focus of this grant is on the person's driving habits, not on the person. So, I mean, some people think that sometimes you're being targeted, but I can tell you that this grant in particular, it deals differently than standard police stop traffic citations. We deal with driving behaviors, and we basically set it to areas where you have the most traffic, the most accidents, and it's been very, very successful. The most recent we had was on Parker Street because there was a unfortunate fatal that occurred there, and there was some enforcement done, and when we were done, nobody was speeding on Parker Street because it was, it was hit, and that was done through portions of this grant. So that is what we are requesting here at the Springfield Police Department and the Traffic Unit.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Are there any questions for the Lieutenant Counsel, Davila?
My apologies, I think it was the President. Lieutenant, good evening, sir. It's good to see you. So I just want to make sure, this sixty thousand is to, to say, to use your words, for distracted drivers?
Yes.
The enforcement of distracted drivers. And if we approve this, when can we expect the fruits of this labor to come to effect?
They would start immediately, December of 2023, and this would go through the six stages, culminating in summer impaired driving in August, September of 2024. So this is basically a year-long program, except for a few months. And like I said, it's been very, very effective. We've had hundreds of citations issued. You're talking about monetary as well as warnings. But the emphasis is on high visibility, so...
Right.
Usually when people see the police in a presence, it tends to slow them down, and I think everyone in here can agree that there's a lot of distracted driving going on.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So this is what this focuses on.
So Lieutenant, just to make sure, we can expect this to start rolling out in December, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's a perfect timing, Lieutenant, now that we are, we have the holidays coming, but if I, if I may, Lieutenant, I feel like it's my obligation to tell you, sir, and to encourage you guys to, and I'm sure you guys are, I have no doubt in my mind that you guys are, to pay extra attention in front of the library on State Street. I know for a fact there was another fatality within the last month in front of the library there. I was driving here today myself, and it's pretty dark there. It's pretty dark. I hope nobody gets killed during, ever again, but particularly during Christmas in that little corner there. So I will urge you, maybe we can take some of this money and pay a little bit of extra attention during Christmas in that corner there, on the State Street, sir, because it's extremely concerning, and it's extremely concerning to a lot of the councilors in this humble, wise body. With that, I thank you. I thank you for keeping our roads safe, and I will be happy to vote for this. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Are there any further questions? Counsel Brown, followed by Counsel Click Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to commend and thank Lieutenant Cook for his service to this community. I know it is very difficult. I don't, see, now, I can kind of say it, being a counselor, it's kind of difficult being a black police officer, a police officer in general. Nobody wants to be cops anymore. And my father being a police captain and head of Internal Affairs, and I'm looking for you to be a captain and maybe hopefully even a commissioner one day, and you know I do fight for you. This is something that's definitely needed. It just seems like the number, it was an incident in my area where it cost about a million dollars to do that crosswalk. It's not enough money with the sixty thousand. That's like a drop in the barrel to address it. So I'm glad that we are, you know, putting funding toward it with the sixty, but I mean, it seems like we need like six million, not sixty thousand. Just to, you know, this, 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 this traffic and safety is just really, really key, and there's issues all throughout the community. So I'm glad that you're here, Lieutenant Cook. I'm glad that, you know, we are addressing it, and hopefully, you know, the council, we can lobby for more funding and think of more creative ways to get you guys some more funding. But like I said, my superheroes, they wear badges, not capes. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Counsel Click Bruce?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Lieutenant Cook. I just have a question, I think you addressed it. Guess you guys were on Parker Street. That was one of my concerns, because eight days ago, we just recently had another fatality with a motorcyclist, and then the month of October, it was, it was hectic on Parker Street, and then Boston Road as well. So do we have a listing of areas we're going to actually be attacking, or do we have any input on that? Or how does, how does that, how does that work?
Okay, what we do is we take the crash data that we accumulate through all the different sources we have. I can tell you that in fiscal year 2022, for that grant, we had thirteen fatalities, traffic-related fatalities. Right now, in 2023, we are also at thirteen. But if you look at 2022, the areas hit most where we had our serious crashes, Berkshire Ave, Boston Road, Page Boulevard, Armory Street, those areas were mostly affected by these fatalities. In 2023, you still have Parker Street and Boston Road, but now you had Wilbraham Road, Locust Street, Hancock, and Dickinson. So what you can see is that there has been some impact as far as the grant working towards the areas hit. I do know that we will be hitting all the main thoroughfares. I can tell you that Sumner Ave will be addressed. I can tell you that Parker Street will continue to be addressed. Boston Road will be, can, addressed. State Street will be addressed. And yes, I go to every fatal accident, and I am now privy to the problems that the city has. I believe that distracted driving is probably the number-one cause because people have still not yet learned to put their cell phones down when they drive. Cars are made to go faster, and if you're not careful, Snapchatting, Facebooking, or whatever else you may be doing can cost somebody their lives or your own. So we do have a target zone that we will be hitting, and it will cover all of these main thoroughfares, and they will all get their due diligence. You're right, sixty thousand dollars is not a lot of money, but we will be able to do a lot with that money. If we had more, it wouldn't hurt, of course, but like I said, this is all about trying to educate the public on the aspects of public safety and the operation of your vehicle. You need to pay attention to what you're doing. You need to have your eyes on the road, and that's not downlooking at your phone. That's not FaceTiming. That is not putting on your makeup, I mean, whatever. There's all kinds of things to be distracted. Distracted driving does not necessarily entail cellphone use, okay? Either way, I think that this grant has helped us make the city safer based on this data we have, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you, Lieutenant Cook. Public safety is near and dear to my heart, so I would like to work with you. I think we need to put out some PSAs as well, so I would like to work with you on that. But again, thank you for your, for your dedication and service to our city, because this is going to truly make a difference, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel Click Bruce. Are there any further questions for the Lieutenant? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance of the grant.
On acceptance of the grant, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item nineteen, I'm sorry, item eighteen.
Item eighteen is FY24 Shine Grant, No Match Required, in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Director Federico.
Good evening, everyone. This is the second installment for our FY24 regular shine grant in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, which brings the total amount of this grant up to seventy-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions from members of the council or deliberation? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance of the grant.
On acceptance of the grant, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the vote's sufficient, the grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item twenty.
Item twenty is for bills of prior year of various departments in the amount of two thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars.
Deputy Caffo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order is to fund for bills of prior year for various departments totaling two thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars.
Thank you, Deputy. Are there any questions or deliberation? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on authorizing the bill of prior year.
On authorizing the bills, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, bill is authorized. Madam Clerk, please call item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is for an elder affairs donation in the amount two thousand dollars.
Director Federico.
Thank you. This money is from our friends at Country Bank. This is an annual donation in the last couple of years that we are entitled to use without restriction for programming at any of our centers.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or deliberation? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on accepting the donation.
On accepting the donation, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the vote is sufficient, the donation is accepted. Please let the donor know that they have the gratitude of the Springfield City Council. Madam Clerk, please call item twenty-two, and as you call item twenty-two, if someone from Focus could come up here and talk to me for a second. Item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two is corrective order authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for sale of fifty-eight Itten Dale Street to Concerned Citizens for Springfield, Inc., for the consideration of five thousand dollars.
Is there anyone here to speak to this item?
Hi, yes, Tina Quagliato Sullivan, Director of Disaster Recovery, Nineteen Bedford Road in Springfield. So the council actually previously approved this order in September. Unfortunately, the order that was brought before the council at the time accidentally did not include the assessed value, so we're asking the council just to approve this corrected order before we transfer the property. The council also has previously approved this project prior to September in the approval of the CPA funding that will go towards the renovation of the house.
Thank you. Are there any questions or deliberation? Seeing none, without objection, please call the roll on the corrective order. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
On approving the corrective order, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the order is authorized. Yes, the votes are sufficient, the order is authorized. Madam Clerk, please call item twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is corrective order authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the sale of East Side Morton Street.
Ms. Quagliato Sullivan?
Yes, so I actually did not present this last time it came before the council. I believe it was presented by Robert Demucis of the Housing Office, but he's on medical leave, so I'm here on his behalf. But again, this is another incident where the assessed value was accidentally left out of the order, and so we're just bringing that corrected version back to you all for approval, again, for approval before the transfer happens.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or deliberation amongst the council? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the role on authorizing the corrective order.
On authorizing the corrective order, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the order is authorized. Madam Clerk, please call the final item, item twenty-four.
Item twenty-four is an interest arbitration award for the Springfield Police Supervisors Association.
Attorney Mahoney.
Good evening, councilors. I have good news to report. We have an interest arbitration award under Chapter 589 of the Acts of 1987, which is the Joint Labor Management Committee statute. I think it's important to start off by noting that, under that statute, both the city administration and the exclusive bargaining agent, the union, are both obligated to support this award under the law. We support it, we think it's a good award, it addresses concerns raised by both sides. Under the JLMC statute, if you can't resolve your collective bargaining at the table, you go to mediation. And if you can't resolve an mediation, you go to interest arbitration. So, that's what we ended up with, and we actually took an additional step. After interest arbitration, we went to post-arbitration mediation. We still couldn't get anything done, and at that point, we were issued an award by a panel. The panel is consistent of a neutral member, a management member, and a labor member. So let me just back up a little bit before I get into the specifics of that. There's about 75 members in this bargaining unit, and they consist of the police sergeants, lieutenants, and captains at the Springfield Police Department. Negotiations began on February 5, 2020, so we've been at the table for a very long period of time. We had 11 bargaining sessions, we had four mediation sessions, and then we had what's called a 3A hearing. And at this hearing, the city can bring forward five issues, and the union can bring forward five issues. That's all you can bring forward. We each get five each, and then wages in duration. The city's five issues were all issues from the DOJ settlement agreement. These are all things that the city negotiated with the Department of Justice, and which were unfiled in U.S. District Court, and things that were related to collective bargaining. That's all we brought forward, were just DOJ issues, and I'm happy to report, we got all five of those issues. And these were significant issues that we wanted for police reform through the negotiations with DOJ. And that included an update to the body worn camera program, performance evaluations, a field training officer program, and a couple of others I'll get to in a minute. Issues were also raised by the union in that 3A hearing, and they also were successful in getting some of the things they were looking for in interest arbitration as well. The remaining, there are a few remaining DOJ issues that we were successful in getting with the IBPO that we were not able to even bring forward because of the limitation on the number of issues that we could bring into the 3A hearing. So, and at the, with the IBPO, you will recall that I brought that contract into you, that was one of the 12 contracts we got done in this cycle already, actually 11 out of the 12 are done, this is the 12th. And there were nine issues from the DOJ settlement that the IBPO agreed to. We couldn't bring all, we couldn't bring all nine to 3A hearing, so we brought the five that we thought were most significant at this point, and we'll have four more when we go back to the table in January. So this contract, if it's approved, or the funding for this contract is approved tonight, it'll carry us through to June 30 of 2024, but we'll be back at the table in negotiations as early as January of '24, so about, you know, seven weeks from now, we can be back at the table again and address any remaining issues. So we'd ask you to support the award tonight. It's a good decision, addresses issues raised by both parties, and it's, we think it's a fair award, and we hope you vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Attorney Mahoney. I know the union leadership is present. I don't know, Captain Keenan, if you wish to be recognized, but if you do, you're certainly welcome. If not, we'll move to questions and deliberation from the council, starting with Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the police department for the hard work that you do. I didn't know you were the union president, Captain Keenan, but I think that's a great choice. I just wanted to ask, what were the four things that weren't brought forward? I know in the finance meeting, you talked about the five, but what were the four that were not brought forward?
Thank you, councilor. Yes, under the IBPO agreement that we reached, we changed the amount of time that you, that the city has to bring a charge against an officer. So it was 90 days, we moved it to 120 days, and then we added this language that says, if we don't bring it within that 90 day, or that 120-day period, and it's something that's beyond our control, we can still bring it forward. Well, that important language is already in the police supervisors' contract. So their contract is at 90 days right now, and it already has that language. If we can't get it done in 90 days because we didn't know about it, or something else came up, we can still bring it forward. But we did not get it to 120 days. That's one of the four items we'd bring back to the table in January. The other one that, another one that we brought, that we will be bringing forward is, the IIU attorney may be required to make a recommendation to the superintendent or a hearing officer on disciplinary charges. So right now, there's an IIU attorney, and he takes a look at all these cases as they come in, and after hearing, he could make a recommendation to either a hearing officer or the superintendent as to whether or not those charges should be sustained or not. What he cannot do, though, is he can't make a recommendation to the Board of Police Commissioners. That's going to be something that's separate. The third thing that we are looking, that we would be looking for in January or later, and when we get back to the table, that is, that we got with the IBPO was that disciplinary hearings will be audio and video recorded at the city's discretion and made available to the compliance evaluator to watch at a later date. So that's something that we will put on the table again as we get to January or later. And then finally, one last thing that we didn't get, that the city has been looking at for decades, was the name tags.
The what?
Name tags on the uniforms. So we have that on the IBPO, and you may have noticed that, as you've gone around through the community, you'll see the officers, I believe, already have the name tags on. We don't have that with the supervisors right now, but we do, we'll have that on the table again when we get to the table in January or so.
Okay, so these four items were items that the union wanted or didn't want?
We did not reach an agreement on those items, and because we were limited to only bringing five items to the JLMC, these were four that we didn't get there. We had the other five, which we thought were higher priority than these four, so...
And the five got approved through this agreement?
Yes, yes, they did.
And what were those five?
Yep, I can bring you back to that. The internal investigations unit and the force investigations unit interviews will be recorded at our discretion, and we'll be providing a copy of that to the union. So if we have to make an IIU interview with somebody, we'll be recording the interviews. A performance evaluation program, so that now all officers will be evaluated every year, and then that is done by their initial supervisor and that person's supervisor. And then there's a counseling meeting with the employee afterwards to talk about, hey, this is what you're doing great, we're really thrilled with the work you're doing here, this is something you could do a little bit better. The third thing that we have was a field training officer policy and program. It's extremely detailed, it's a very long, thorough policy, and that would be 12 weeks after somebody gets out of the academy. And what happens is, they are partnered, they are partnered up with another patrol officer who's been trained to be a field training officer. They go through a separate set of training, and then what they're going to do is, with these new police officers, is do daily observation reports every single day that they ride along with that person, and again, go through, look at, you did something great here, you know, this is really, you're really excelling here, this is something that you need to work on. The fourth item we had was, we actually, you're all familiar, we have a body worn camera policy program in the department, but we actually have two policies. We have an older policy, and we have the newer policy. So the newer policy is what we want to bring the police supervisors into under this interest arbitration award. They will be under that policy, so there'll only be one policy in the department, it'll be the newest one, and it will lay out exactly when you need to make a recording, that you need to put the recording in your reports, and you need to tell people when you're making that recording. Some of that stuff is already in there, this is a little bit more specific. Finally, the fifth item we got was a disciplinary policy and matrix. Again, it was something that was required under the DOJ settlement. You don't see a lot of these. We had to go looking, we actually looked across the country for a lot of these policies. We found one down in Baltimore, Maryland, and what this does is, it just tells employees, if you violate these rules, these are what the potential consequences are. And it's just, it's a matrix, so you can look right across, say, okay, I did this, and this is probably something that would happen to me if I did that. And it's a range, it's a range of penalties. It's not hard and fast, but it gives employees a guide. It's a fair way of getting, letting people know what the discipline consequences are in our organization.
Thank you. And then my final question is for Deputy Caffo, or Caffo. So there will be some retro pay?
Yes.
How much is that?
So, right now, we're estimating just over $3 million, but once we firm up those numbers, we'll come back to you with an appropriation order.
Appropriation order.
To move the money into their budget, because it's not there right now.
No, it's not there. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Are there any further questions or deliberation? Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to talk to a union representative, if possible.
Captain Keenan? Please state your name for the...
Brian Keenan, 15 Yorktown Drive, Springfield.
Thank you, Captain, thank you for your service. How do you guys feel as far as the agreements?
We're required to support the award by law.
Okay, and a lot of times, I'm just curious, when you guys are doing a lot of these negotiations, you know, me, me being a kid, a cop kid, is there, is there reasons why we, I wouldn't be, we won't be able to come in and maybe give you some support in the lobbying process? Is there, is that against, like, the rules or something? I'm just curious.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. Mr. Mahoney would be able to answer that better than I would, I'm sure, though.
Because sometimes, and the reason why I ask, because sometimes, you know, this is pretty much a negotiation between two parties, and, you know, sometimes, if one party might have to settle for things that they might not really want to settle, and if they were just right there, and they had a little bit more support, that you guys might be able to push them, you know, over the line and get some of the resources and support that you guys need.
That certainly would be helpful.
So I just, if you guys ever, if you check on it, if you can, if you ever need me, let me know. Once again, thank you for your service. Captain, you're well-known for your service and what you do. I commend you for your service, and once again, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Brown. Are there any further questions or deliberation? Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Captain Keenan. I just wanted to ask you, I had asked it at the finance committee meeting, I wanted to know what both sides were, and did you just answer, Counselor Brown, that you're in support of this?
We have to support it as part of the statute.
Okay, and are you particularly concerned about any of the four issues that didn't make it?
We, the union was more than willing to give the city all four issues that didn't make it, and we still, we still are willing to do that. We believe in transparency. I was here at the last contract, it was denied by the council, and I knew how important that extra 30 days was in the investigation process, and we were astounded that it was left off of the list, but we don't bargain against ourselves. We pick our five issues, Mr. Mahoney picks the city's five issues, and then the arbitrator, you know, the arbitrator makes his decision, and we all have to live with it.
And the arbitrator's, that sounds like it's final arbitration, correct? That's my...
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for Director Mahoney, and then for the Captain Keenan after, but, Director Mahoney, good evening, sir. Let me just start with some of the basics here, sir. So it seems like the city was offering 2% increase, but the final increase is going to be 3% going back to 2021 through 2024, correct?
Yeah, so, that's a, that's a strategy of negotiation, knowing that there's an uncertainty as what the arbitrator would award. So if the arbitrator did not award any of the city's issues...
Right.
We would have been looking at 2%. And if the arbitrator awarded the city's issues, we'd be, we certainly knew we'd be paying more.
Okay.
And of course, the arbitrator awarded all the city's issues.
Right, Director, so let you know, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you back here. If you could speak a little louder, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
So Director Mahoney, the, let's talk for a second about, which was brought up a couple of times already, about the performance evaluation and the field training officer program. So, it's in the DOJ that performance evaluations are to be performed, correct?
Yes.
That's in the settlement. Now, each supervisor is going to be getting a stipend of $1,000, correct?
Yes.
And that, that's compensation for both the performance evaluation and the field training program?
There's $1,000 for each of those programs, paid on the last payroll of each year, once it's been required or in place.
Okay, so there's $1,000 per...
For each of those two programs.
So they'll be getting $2,000.
Yes, and top of the 3% increases.
Okay, and that goes to sergeants all the way to...
Captains.
Captains, okay. So, I just have some questions on this. How, how is that going to be done? Because I find it pretty difficult to do an effective evaluation of 80 guys. How, how is the officer going to be insured that they're getting a fair evaluation and not just a peep, a cookie cutter evaluation?
So the, so the sergeant that has 10 officers under him or her would do the evaluation of this, those 10 officers, then the sergeant supervisor would review the sergeant's evaluations of those 10 officers. The same thing, the sergeant would be reviewed by the lieutenant, and the lieutenant's evaluation of the sergeant would be reviewed by the captain, and so forth and so on.
Okay, I understand, I understand that, but in terms of compensation, I would have thought that as it gets higher up the ladder, the compensation might have increased, because at some point, somebody has to sign off on the evaluations, but I see that, you know, as one of the colleagues said before, this negotiation will be to two parties.
But you, just, if I can just interject, Counselor, because the COLAs are 3, 3, 3, and 3, you know, 3% of a captain's salary is going to be higher than 3% of a sergeant's salary, so that's going to kind of be built in when you do the COLAs.
That's a nice argument, but, you know, if I put in my name to something at the end, I definitely want to be compensated appropriately for that extra work. I understand what you're saying, but I don't, respectfully, I don't agree with you.
Okay.
So they're getting $1,000 for both programs. I also have to say that, I think it's good, it's a good start, and I think we could do better than that, but I have to, and I know this is a different contract, but I cannot pass this opportunity to say, as I mentioned last time, that I'm pretty disappointed that with the regular guys, they're not getting compensated, oh, I mean, heartfelt thank you. And I know I told you that before, this, before, Director, and I do hope, I have an expectation that the next time we talk about the police union contract for the regular guys, that we, that we hope, that I hope to see compensation for the FDOs, because that takes time and effort. So putting that as a comment there, because I can see that the supervisors are getting compensated, which is good, but the regular guys are not, and I find that honestly disheartening. And you don't have to comment on that, I'm just putting my two cents on that aspect. If I may, my last question is, the increase of 30 days, what's the logic, correct me if I'm mistaken, I could be mistaken, Director, for the regular guys, it's 90 days for charges to be forward, correct?
No.
It's 120 as well?
It's 120 days for the rank and file, for the supervisors, it's 90. We would bring the proposal of 120 days the next time we get back to the table with the supervisors, which will start in January or later.
In priority, so you're bringing them, you're bringing them up with priority with the police, with the regular patrols?
Yes, yes.
Now, talk to me about this, you mentioned something about if we find something down the line, what do you mean by that?
I...
Or something to that effect? You mentioned something that the city, the language, that there is possibility that after 120 days, if new stuff comes up...
So if, if for some reason, we were prevented from bringing charges for some legitimate reason, we could still bring the charges, and then we, the burden would be on the city to say, hey, listen, yeah, we know we've gone past 120 days, but we weren't even aware of it because no one ever filed a report, and now we are aware of it, and it's been 150 days, so we're bringing the charges anyways. That burden would be on us, and that language already exists in the supervisors' contract, and it's new language to the patrol officer's contract.
It's a new language in the patrol, in the patrolmas.
It is, right, so we just took the, the language that was in the supervisors' contract, we just mirrored that into the patrol officer's contract in the last round of negotiations.
I'm a little, I hear you, I'm a little hesitant with that, because to me, it seems that it's having a noose on your neck at all times, because you just never know, at some point, resolution has to come. And, you know, working in this environment, it's tough, you know, how do you balance? You know, how do you balance that? I'm a little concerned with this 120 days myself, but I would love to hear what my colleagues have to say before we move on. But, so I believe one of my counselors said that this is final, so what role do we have other than approving this?
Your, your vote is on funding the agreement.
Say that again?
Your vote is for funding this agreement.
Correct. No, I understand, we cannot change anything on the, on the contract.
You can't change anything that's in it.
Right, I get that. So if we reject it, we go back to a drawing table, correct?
Go back to the table, and we would go back to, I'm sure the JLMC would come in and inquire as to why it was rejected. The, the award would have no bearing, can't come back, it's just gone, it doesn't, it doesn't survive anything. And then you're back at the table, and like I said, we...
No, I, I understand that, but I, Director, I understand that, but I honestly, I respectfully, the DOJ can, can probably question, wonder what, how, how I vote is how I vote. And so that's that, so I'm not going to let the DOJ influence how I vote. I, I do have some concerns with, with some of this stuff, but I would love to hear what my other colleagues have to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. We'll go to Counselor Curran, followed by Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Senator, thank you, Council President Liederman. Mr. Mahoney, can you explain a little bit more that 90-day statute of limitations provision that the DOJ wanted? I know our former counselor, former colleague counselor, Orlando Ramos, had made that a real point of contention several years ago. Why was that not included in the negotiations this time around?
Oh, Counselor, it was included. So all of these items were brought to the table. We've, we've made all of these proposals, but as I was saying, when you get, when you get to mediation, it's still there, it's still something we're negotiating, but once you get to what's called the 3A hearing, which we did in Worcester back last January, you can only take five of your issues there. So you could have 20 issues, but only five get to move forward, and it's the same thing for the union.
Did you think that this was an important issue to move forward? It's the statute of limitations. You know, apparently, if wrongdoing is happening in the police department, and obviously, we'd want a longer, more than 90 days to investigate any potential wrongdoing. I mean, wouldn't we think that this is something that we, in light of all the lawsuits the city has faced, that this is something that we'd want to push?
It's, it is an important issue, we will, we will be pushing it, but I will tell you that it's not as important as the five that we brought forward. We consulted with the superintendent's office on what issues we were going to bring forward, and we already had the 90-day language, and we had that extra language that was already in the supervisor's contract, which said if there was, if there's some reason that we couldn't get the 90 days, you know, we can still bring it forward, but the burden will be on us to show that it was beyond our control, and therefore, we still bring the cases forward.
And can you explain it to us a little further? It's 90 days from what, discovery of wrongdoing or 90 days of, can you go into a little bit more detail about it?
Sure. All interdepartmental charges against a unit member shall be initiated no later than 90 days following the alleged offense, and a hearing on said charges shall be held within a reasonable time thereafter. In the event that charges are initiated subsequent to 90 days as set forth above, the city will have the burden to prove that such delay was caused by circumstances beyond the control of the department, which rendered the initiation of charges impracticable within the time period specified here and above. So that's, that's the...
So 90 days from, 90 days from the offense?
It's not from the alleged offense, yes.
And you didn't think that was important to bring as your top five? I mean, I think in light of...
That is, that is the language we already have. That language is already in the contract. The difference would be moving that from 90 to 120 days. So we would get, we get 30 more days out of it, and we thought the other, the field training officer program is far more important than adding 30 days to that language.
I would have to disagree with that, actually. I mean, in light of all the lawsuits that we've had, I mean, we've had, you know, multiple over the last three, four, or five years of multimillion-dollar lawsuits. I think it would be imperative that there is a level of transparency in the Springfield Police Department, and imperative that we have as long as possible from the date of offense to figure out if something is awry. The fact that, you know, is it possible that somebody could, at 90 days, run out the clock, so to speak? And wouldn't we want it to be at 120 days and mirror what the patrolmen's contracts say? So I respectfully, on that particular point, would disagree. I do think it's important that we have 120 days to address potential infractions of police policy, and I think, do think that's part of the reason why the Department of Justice has made it one of their major points, and I do think our former colleague vocalized that quite eloquently. I do think that this is a major sticking point. I do think this is something that should be discussed. So based on that, and based on the importance of this 90 to 120-day issue, I would like to make a motion for my colleagues to consider and debate, to send this to committee, to discuss this 120-day look back, from 90-day look back, and perhaps we can move it to 120 days, because I do think it's that important. Again, the city council in particular has led the charge for police reform. This city council in particular has led the, the council to go all the way to the Supreme Judicial Court, which had said that we needed an added layer of transparency. And I actually think that not bringing this to the table really is indicative of the reason why we've had so many problems. So I'd like to make the motion to move this to committee, so we can discuss this further. And it's an important contract, and obviously, it's important for the police department as well as the entire city of Springfield, and I'd just like a little bit more time to review it with you, Mr. Mahoney, my colleagues, and whatever input we can get before we make a decision. So I'd like to put that, place that motion on the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Curran. Counselor Curran's made a motion to refer this item to committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was seconded by Counselor Walsh. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer to committee? Counselor Whitfield on the motion, followed by Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. So my question is, and this is on the motion, so I can make an informed decision, Mr. Mahoney. The 90-day look back, so when we, when we look back and we start the investigation, do we have 90 days to complete it, or we just have 90 days for someone to bring...
We have 90 days to bring charges from the date of the alleged offense.
But we have time to...
But if we're not aware of it, I would argue that, you know, if no one, no one comes forward for 60 days, and then they come forward and say, hey, listen, this happened, and that's when the department becomes aware of it, I think at that point, you're going to start your clock, or you're going to be able to say, look, if we're going to bring charges after the 90 days because we weren't aware of it, it was beyond our control.
So if someone comes 60 days, that mean we have to investigate it for 30 days? Like, complete it in 30 days?
Let me just, let me just go back to the language.
Is that what I mean?
All interdepartmental charges against a unit member shall be initiated no later than 90 days following the alleged offense, and a hearing on said charges shall be held within a reasonable time thereafter. That's the current thing. But if we didn't, if we weren't aware of it till day 89, we can't get an investigation done in one day. The department's not going to be able to do that. That doesn't mean we're going to ignore the charges. I'm sure the department's going to still go forward with it, and if someone raises this as a defense, we're going to say, we weren't aware of it, and under this language, we can still bring these charges.
Right. So the reason that, I want more information too, but the reason that I don't want to send it to committee is because the officers have been waiting since 2020 on a raise, right? And they deserve it, and we are not going to be able to change it right now. We're, it's, it's, it's the law, it's the statute. So we're, we can, we can discuss it, we can even discuss it in committee without bringing this particular item to committee. We can have a subcommittee meeting and discuss the language and how it works without holding up the vote, and I think they've waited long enough. I think they deserve a raise since 2020. I think they work hard for our community, and we can always discuss this in a public safety meeting or general committee, subcommittee, to learn how the language works, but it's not going to change the negotiations at this point. The negotiations are still going to not happen again until, what, next year, 2024? So why would we want to hold up their raise or their increases on something we won't be able to change anyway? So for those reasons, I will not support this going to committee.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Brown on the motion, followed by Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't, I, I myself wouldn't recommend putting this in committee. If you recall, my first initial questions to both parties was, is there a way where we could be brought to the negotiation table? Now, these negotiations been going on over and over and over and over. They've had arbitrations, and now, once everything is settled, we're going to come like some Johnny-come-latelys and try to arbitrate. I believe that in the future, and that's why I asked, that maybe some of the counselors can help lobby some through the process, but the process has already been done. And for us to hold up people's livelihoods, okay? People who serve, protect us, livelihood, okay? None of these, none of these police officers, I don't think, make a million dollars. So I think we need to go on with what both parties agreed on, and just based on the fact that in the future, they're, they're able to still address the matter, and it will still be addressed in the future. And like I said, I, I don't want to be a Johnny-come-lately. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill, I'm sorry, Attorney Mahoney, was the 90-day and the 120, one of the five things that you talked about this time, or is that for next year?
Well, it had been on the table. First of all, I'm starting to feel like Pat Sullivan. I've been up and down so many times on this aisle here.
Just stand there.
Pat brings the money in.
Right.
I just, I just spend it.
It's a big difference.
So the, the 90, 120, that, that was on the table during the main table negotiations. So we've been over that a bunch of times, and tried to work, tried to work that issue out, but we didn't reach what we call a tentative agreement on that issue. So then, because that, that was one of our nine, we had to trim it down to five, we brought the, what we thought were the five most important, but...
And is the, again, I'm not sure, I don't think I heard the right answer. So was that one of the five?
That was not one of the five.
That's not.
It was not.
So actually, that's, right now, the arbitration and the agreement that you all came to doesn't even include that discussion?
It, it does not. And it's not, I, I should be clarified for the council, it's not an agreement, this is an, this is a decision.
Settlement, right.
It's an award, yeah.
Right. Okay, so because of that, because it wasn't one of the five things that you guys discussed, I don't think that, that moving the, the, the agenda item to committee would make any sense at this time, because you're still going to discuss the 90-day and 120-day in the next round of negotiations, correct?
Yes, Counselor.
Okay, so thank you, I won't be supporting that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. On the motion, any other counselors? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I hear a lot of good back and forth, and some very, very good points in favor of keeping this, moving this forward. But specifically, I think that, first, I think that we should, and we better, ensure that when there's an accusation, that the investigation moves forward effectively, efficiently, and to the spirit of the law. With that being said, I also think that we need to provide our, our supervisors a degree of insurance over the job, because I just keep looking at this like having, again, a noose around your neck at all times. Now, don't get me wrong, a police officer has the two greatest powers on the face of this earth. Powers that even, that we as counsel don't have. And that is one, they can legally take your liberty away and go for bid, they can also legally take your life away. Now, if that itself is not a reason for civilian oversight, I don't know what it is. I don't know what makes, what is the reason. So of course, they need to be oversight. Similarly, I also think that we need to provide some sort of level of insurance that we're going to have their back as well. Now, again, Director Mahoney, if I may, I like to put my dogs in the row, like I say all the time here. So if an offense happens today, I'm driving home, may the Lord protect me and keep me safe, as I drive home tonight, and the police officer decides that he's going to violate my civil rights for whatever reason, and today is November 12, 13? November 13th. That means that I have December, January, up to February 13th to make a complaint, correct?
You can make a complaint at any time.
Well, yes, I know that. I have 90 days, correct?
Counselor, let me go over that again, okay? It's, if we don't, if we don't become aware of it, if the department isn't informed...
That's what I'm getting at.
Right. If the department's not informed about it, I would say that's when the clock is going to start ticking. Under, under the language in the contract, we've got 90 days to bring charges from the date of the alleged offense.
Right.
But if we don't know about it, that other sentence kicks in that say, where we're going to say, right, we found out about it 95 days later, and now we're going to bring charges.
So that's, I'm speaking of, Director. So if I don't say a word, or I don't make any complaint until February 14th, if I make the complaint until February 14th, you could say, we didn't know about it. At that point, and you say they know about it, you have 120 days from today's day, from, from November 13th, correct?
No.
So it will be another 120 days?
If, if we had, if, the, the language in the contract would just add 30 days to the current 90. So, you know, using your example, if we found out about it on April 14th, you know, you, someone came forward on April 14th and said, you know, well past 120 days, and they said, you know, hey, this happened to me.
Well, let's, let's stick, let's stick with my example. If something happens to me today, November 13th, and I do not make a complaint until February 13th, when, from the date of offense, which is today, when does the 120-day end?
Okay, so again, just so I'm clear, there is no 120 days with the supervisors, right? There's 90 days with the supervisors.
Correct.
Okay? So 120 days isn't relevant at this point. That's something we will bring forward in the next round of negotiations.
Director, you did, you did say 120 days. How is that relevant now?
Yeah, 120 days is in the patrol officer's contract, and we had proposed to put it in the supervisor's contract, but we didn't make that one of our top five issues. We had other issues that we thought were more important, so this issue didn't make it through to arbitration.
No, I understand that, because, you know, similarly, with a 3% raise, this livelihood, this could also be the livelihood. I want to make sure that I vote, before I vote on this, I know exactly what I'm voting on.
Sure.
Honestly, I'm getting more confused with your explanation than before. So I ask you again, if something happens to me today, November 13th, there's 90 days start, excuse me, 90 days going to effect, that puts me December, January, February 13th, and I don't say anything until February 14th, I don't file a complaint. What happens at that point?
IIU is still going to investigate your complaint, and the department is still going to bring the charges forward, I would believe.
And how long do they have to do that?
There isn't, there is not a specific timeframe, but they should do it with all due diligence and bring it forward as soon as they complete their investigation. And the union can say, if they want, at arbitration, they can say, city, you didn't bring it here in time. You weren't, you had 90 days to get it in, and the city's going to rebut that, or try to rebut that by saying, under the language in the contract, we weren't even aware of it until after the 90 days elapsed, and that's why we investigated, and that's why we're bringing, that's why we brought the charges after 90 days. And that decision will then be left to a grievance arbitrator to decide whether or not we're okay coming in after 90 days.
Counselor Davila, I don't want to interrupt your train of thought, but I've, I've been made aware that the live stream is experiencing a technical difficulty, and since we are debating transparency, in the name of that, I'm declaring a two-minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Members, I'm told we're back up and running? And the floor remains at this time with Counselor Davila. We are on the motion to refer this item to committee. The motion was made by Counsel Curran. Counselor Davila on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did Director Mahoney leave, or? Oh, he's still there. Okay.
I'll move the vote.
Director, before I say anything else, I, again, I thank you, and I will admit to you, if anybody knows me, they know that if I don't understand something, I'm going to ask questions. And honestly, sir, I am more confused now than 10 minutes later, ago, rather. I do not understand your answers. If I'm a supervisor, I will feel that I'm standing in front of a firing squad constantly. I will feel that a noose is around my neck all the time. Now, a comment was made a little while ago about livelihoods. It is true, but this is also the livelihood. Now, again, I'm the first one that want the cops to be oversight. I'm the first one to say, we need to have a strong oversight, including supervisors. But I am uncomfortable mainly because I don't understand what it is, the 90, 120 days, because at some point, that has got to be a resolution. Cops deal with so many people a day that it will be a constant threat to them. I want to ensure and the cops to know that if you're a good cop in this city, we got your back. your back. If you wear that badge with honor, and you do your job honorably, I got your back. If you are not doing the right thing, if you like to violate people's civil rights, then we will prosecute you accordingly, we will go after you. And so, you know, some people might say, well, you know, here we go again, you know, I understand that you should understand it. Well, no, it doesn't work that way. Maybe you understand it. Maybe some counselors here, I can see some of them do understand. I don't. And at the end of the day, we're talking about people's livelihood as well, because those guys in the police department, the supervisors, have put in the sweat, the time and effort and the sweat for this city. So, I'm going to ask you one more time, if to see if you could please explain to me, if something happens to me today, and I don't say anything until February 14th, which is 90 days, when does, when does my ability to bring a charge against that supervisor expires? Assuming that it's not a felony, I know felony is a whole different thing.
There is no expiration date after the 90 days, but if we are not aware of it, if the depart, the Springfield, not we, but if the Springfield Police Department is not aware of it, it can be brought at any time. However, it may not be upheld by an arbitrator if discipline were imposed. So, if it's very stale, if it's very old, they may not, they may investigate it still, but there may not be any charges that could stick to the officer. But there's no additional timeline in any of the contracts beyond the ones that we've already discussed tonight, the 90 for the supervisors and the 120 for the patrol officers.
So, you're saying that it's 90 for the supervisors and 120?
That's the current, right now, that is currently what we have, 90 for supervisors, 120 for patrol.
Why the difference between the two?
Well, it was, it was 90 for both, and the police patrolmen had a very narrow 60-day window to actually have the charges brought forward. That language was changed to the language that we currently have in the contract, which says, if we weren't aware of it, we can bring it later. You know, it's, the burden's on us to show why we went beyond either the 90 or the 120. That burden is on us, and an arbitrator could say, it's not good enough, you can't bring it forward.
Right, right. You know, I understand that our only role here is to accept or reject it. I understand that. I understand that this was a dawn between the city and the police union, excuse me, the supervisors' union. I get that. But I don't feel comfortable with this particular thing. And so, at least on this particular item, Mr. President, I will be voting in favor of the motion to send to committee. Thank you, Director Mahoney, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you Counselor Davila. We're going to go to Counselor Curran at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Counselor Davila, I don't blame you, because I was confused as well, along with you, with the explanation. If, on day 91, the offense is discovered, I think, under the language as before the council, they would have a pretty good defense. And I guess, like, again, the point of the, the discussion is, why not agree with the DOJ recommendation of the 120 days? If I can remind my colleagues, this contract, as it comes due in January, I mean, we may not have a resolution to this for another three years, because there's no, there's no telling that the next contract will be agreed to. So, we might be stuck with this 90-day language for the next three or four years coming. I guess my question to Attorney Mahoney is, if we do put this into committee, and the union, the supervisors' union, were to agree with it, could we, could the city come to an agreement of increasing this language to 120 days in the interest of transparency? You stated that this was the DOJ's, one of the most important points that DOJ is looking for, you stated that you're looking for it. If we put this to committee and there was an agreement before we sign off on this, could we, could we increase this 90-day period to 120?
Well, I didn't say this was the most important, one of the most important points for the DOJ. The DOJ's settlement agreement with the city is 69 pages long. This is a point, and when we looked at it, we had, what we identified for labor relations were nine points that we needed to negotiate with our two units. And when we looked at the nine points, knowing we can only bring five forward, this did not make our top five. With that being said, this, this piece is not even in play right now, but it will be in play the next time we go to the table for negotiations with the police supervisors. And the DOJ's language was not 120 days, I believe it was an unlimited number of days, and we came down with a compromise with the IBPO at the 120. I think that's how we agreed, because we knew we weren't going to get the full unlimited time period to bring charges against someone. So, we expanded the period a little bit. I'm hoping that's satisfactory to the compliance evaluator, and if it's not, we're going to have to come back to the table again on it, but...
My question is, if it was sent, if this is sent to committee, could we change it to 120 days?
You can't change, you can't change the award at all. You could negotiate something other than the award, and then pull this from the council, but you can't change the award itself.
This particular, this particular provision, though, if there was an agree...
This position, this, there is, this is not a provision in the award. This, this does not, whatever we've been talking about in the 90 and 120, that is not part of this award, that is nothing that is in front of this council. That's a separate issue that can come up down the road, and you could negotiate something completely different from, from this award, and say, we're going to pull this award from the council, and we're just going to make a settlement agreement on other terms, but you can't change this because it's not in the award.
Could you provide this clarification? Would you be able to do a side letter on this award with this language, increasing this language at this point?
Sure. If the, if the union wanted to do a side letter to increase, to make, make this concession to the city, we can do that.
And, so if we send it to committee, we could do a side letter if the union were in agreement?
Yep, I would, I would just express to the council...
Is that yes or no? I mean, is that, is that possible?
Well, anything is possible in labor relations, but I would point out, I would point out, I would point out to the council, I would point out to the council, that since this award has been issued, there has not been any, you know, overtures as far as, let's make a different deal. That has not occurred.
But that's not my question. I can see why your negotiations take three years.
Thank you.
The question is, if there's a side letter, and this goes to committee, and the union's in agreement, could we increase the 90 days to 120? And we have the committee meeting within two weeks, could we do that?
The union can sign a side letter tomorrow about that, yes.
I don't know, Mr. President, is it possible? Well, that's the reason I would suggest to my colleagues, why we would send it to committee. We have the opportunity now to move this from 90 to 120 days. If we simply allowed to take the course of negotiations, it could be like four years before this comes back. And the, and the name of the game, the reason why we want it to 120 days, is in the interest of transparency. So, I really do think that moving this to committee is not, is simply adding two weeks to this negotiation. I actually think it's really integral and at the heart of the negotiation, because we really do have an opportunity to move the 90-day window, if the union is in agreement with a side letter, to 120 days. And I think that makes a lot of sense. It'll be in alignment with the patrolmen, the patrolmen's union.
They could also...
So, again, I would support, I would support the motion, move it to committee, because my idea is, once we get into committee, we could ask the union to agree to up the 90-day statute of limitations to 120 days, and I think that's a lot more equitable, it's a lot more transparent, and I think it's really in line with the Department of Justice wants, and I think it's in line with the residents of Springfield want.
You could, you could also have that done without going to committee, by just having conversations with the union between the administration and the union after this, if they want to talk about a side letter. But I wouldn't delay, I wouldn't, I would not delay this any longer than it is.
I don't think a two-week delay is unreasonable. You haven't, you haven't been able to get a contract signed in two years. And I can see by your somewhat combative tone and confusing tone, why? I mean, I would suggest, again, there's a motion on the floor, to put it to committee. Before I, before we proceed with the motion, Mr. President, I would like to hear from the union president there in the chamber and ask, would, would the union president object to considering increasing the 90-day statute of limitations to 120 days?
Captain Keenan, if you wish to be heard, you have the floor at this time.
Thank you Counselor. The union is always ready and willing to do business with the city in issues of transparency. So, if that's what the council needs, we're certainly willing to sit down and do that.
Counselor Curran?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you Counselor Curran, thank you Captain Keenan. There are many hands up, and I am going to recognize all of you. Counselor Allen has not spoken yet, and so on the motion, Counselor Allen will be recognized. Counselor Edwards has also not spoken yet. So, we're going to go on the motion to Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Edwards.
Thanks, Mr. President. I really want to call the question. I think we've been talking about this long enough. Let's call the question, vote on the committee thing. It's 9:30, we've been talking about it for an hour. We aren't any farther along than we were an hour ago. So, I'd like to call the question, please.
Counselor Allen has made a motion to call the question. That motion was seconded by Counselor Whitfield. We'll now vote on the motion to call the question. This is a motion to call the question on the motion to committee. It requires nine votes to pass. If it passes, debate will be ended, and we will refer, proceed immediately to the vote on the motion to committee. So, at this time, on calling the question, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On calling the question, Counselor Walsh.
Counselor Brown has a question. Counselor Brown?
No, this is not on the actual sending to committee.
Correct. This is on calling the question. If you vote yes, you are voting to end debate. If you vote no, you are voting to continue debate on the motion. On the question, please call the roll.
On calling the question, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The question is called. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to refer this order to committee. A yes vote will refer the matter to committee, a no vote will return us to debate on the petition. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the referral to committee.
On the motion to move to committee, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
No.
No, Counselor Perez, absent. Counselor Whitfield?
No.
No, Counselor Govan?
No.
No, Counselor Allen?
No. Excuse me, no.
No, Counselor Brown?
No.
No, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
No.
No, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes. The vote is tied. And counsel, I've never had to do this before, because this has never happened to me, but I have to refer to the rules relative to the tie unless, unless, unless former Council President Fenton knows off the top of his head, or Counselor Hurst, in the event of a tie.
Majority of the council, not those present.
It's a dead tie.
It's a majority of the council, not those present.
So, there's 12 of us present.
It loses.
No.
Six of us have voted to refer to committee, and six of us have voted to not refer to committee.
Right, but it's a majority of those counselors, not those present. So, there's 13 counselors, a majority of seven.
So, the motion fails.
The motion fails.
The motion failed.
Yes.
It's getting late, folks. The motion has failed. At this time, we will return to debate on the order, and the order is to approve the arbitration agreement. On approving the arbitration agreement, Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Having a lot of knowledge on internal affairs and how the police actually go through the process, what individuals have to understand, and if I may, I want to, if you can... Just so, you know, some of my colleagues would understand, so, basically, if eight months from now, a year from now, I did something that warranted an investigation that still went beyond that 90 days, it would go into a certain area where they would investigate to see if they had enough information to prosecute. So, say there was a rogue cop who was robbing people at gunpoint, and they had him on camera, and then a year later, if they have enough evidence to actually persecute it, and it's egregious enough, they will do so. A lot of times, if an individual comes across a situation with a police officer, they're usually going to notify the necessary people within that amount of time. So, that 90 days, that 120 days, it means absolutely, it means a little bit, if they did something a year from now, and it warranted an investigation from IAU, would they, would they not investigate it?
They're going to investigate it.
And the individual could get in trouble, could they or could they not?
They could, yes.
So, what we have to understand is, we're talking about, if I want to introduce, see, what we're doing now is, there are people who, I don't know, might want to work on not getting hit by horses. That might have been one of the 1,000 things in there. They only picked a few. They could have got to, there's a lot of good issues. So, this wasn't even brought up. This isn't on this thing today. We're not talking about, I don't know, cops at the basketball, when we might need cops there to do ba, we're not talking about that. We're not talking about 90 days, we're not talking about that. We're only talking about today, the five things out of a trillion that these individuals negotiated. And once again, the 90 days, the 120 days, that isn't even on the table. There's other issues that they brought up at this particular point, okay? And, and like I said, they can always, always bring up prosecution if there is enough evidence to do so. And usually, majority of the time, if it's that atrocious, and they find out, they still will prosecute.
Correct. They could still bring charges and...
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Brown on the approval. Counselor Whitfield?
So, Counselor Curran brought up some information that I wasn't quite aware of. I did not realize that if we did go to committee, that we would be able to renegotiate the terms. I thought, based on what we were told, that when it went to mediation arbitration, that it was 100% final, and nothing could be done to change the contract. So, I think we kind of like missed our window of opportunity to discuss, you know, I went to the bathroom and thought about it, some of the changes that we could actually really still make in the contract. I didn't realize that that could still happen. I thought, once they went to arbitration, and it was decided on the five issues, that it was done. So, can you repeat to me how you can still negotiate changes in the contract, or is based on arbitration, everything final?
So, this is an arbitration, award, and decision. This is final, subject to your funding it. If you fund this, this is the contract for the next four years. If it's not funded, we would go back to negotiate, and we would try to come up with something else, or we may end up in a different procedure in front of DLR, Department of Labor Relations. But this is the, this is the process. This is the, this is the closure mechanism, is what we call it in our, in our field. This is the closure mechanism for police and fire cases. So, you go through negotiation, mediation, interest arbitration, and you get a decision. And then, it's binding on us, it's binding on the union, subject to funding by the council. And if you vote it up, that's the deal for four years. And if you vote it up, that's the deal for four years. You get those police reform issues that we've talked about, they're done. But we're going to go back to the table anyways in January and start a whole second round, or another round for FY '25, '26, et cetera.
Because it goes from 2020 to '24.
This would cover FY '21 to '24. Those years will be done and wrapped up, and then we move on to the next, the next round.
Now, if we, if we had put this in committee, and we had a discussion, and you had a discussion with the officers, we could still change the 2020 to '24 contract to 120 days.
So with all due respect, the committee doesn't get to negotiate anything.
I'm saying you and the Union.
And we have been at that since 2020. I don't think that's going to change what we're, what we're doing today. Just being honest about it.
But just to answer the question, it could?
Anything can happen. Yes. Yes, anything can happen.
But when do you start your next negotiations? Like, is it January? Is it March?
The next cycle could be started in January. And those issues that we didn't resolve here, the city will be bringing them back. And the issues that the Union didn't resolve, they're going to want to bring those back too. So things that both sides didn't get in this thing, we're going to, I'm sure they're going to come back, and we're going to talk more about it.
I think we had an opportunity to do something when we were sent it to committee. But right now, I think that they need to get paid. I'm sorry, I just can't go no other way. And I'm going to move the question.
Mr. President?
A motion has been made to move the question. The question was, motion was made by Counselor Whitfield. It was seconded by Counselor Govan. We are proceeding to a vote to move the question. Subject first to the point of order called by Counselor Davila. But if it's not a point of order, I'm going to call it out of order. Counselor Davila?
I could be mistaken, Mr. President, but I do believe this is a very important subject. My understanding of the rules is that if you speak on the issue, that person cannot call the question.
That is not, I think that me and Counselor Davila have actually had this debate before, and I think that we checked on it. And I do think that you can call the question.
You are the parliamentarian, sir, but I do, I do stick by the belief that if you speak on the question, on the issue, sir, you cannot call the question. But you are the parliamentarian, not me, sir.
The motion was made to call the question. Counselor Whitfield made the motion. Counselor Kern? Do you have a point of information, Counselor Kern?
Just, my, I would oppose the motion to move the question. I would actually ask Counselor Whitfield to consider withdrawing that, so I could put a motion to revisit the committee. Because to answer her question, yes, at committee, we can change it from 90 to 120 days.
Counselor Kern, I apologize, but you're out of order. The motion was made to call the question. I understand Counselor Davila's point. And, you know, for that reason, I'm going to call a two-minute recess. I'm going to consult the rules, and we're going to determine whether Counselor Whitfield's motion to call the question was in order. She did speak on it. I understand Counselor Davila's point of order. Because there are multiple other counselors that do want to be heard, for that reason, I'm going to call a recess, and me and the clerk are going to consult the rules, and then we will return with a ruling. I am sorry, Counselor Edwards, but we cannot hear any further debate because of the order.
For you to take more, a request for more clarity when you do meet with the clerk.
Counselor Edwards, on the point of information, Counselor Edwards.
Okay, a point of information. When you meet with the clerk, can you come back and be prepared to answer the question of whether or not we can revisit the motion to send back to committee? Is that an appropriate question, request?
It is not.
Of you as the parliamentarian?
It is not. And, and again, I'm doing this because of the order of what happened. So just to be clear, Counselor Whitfield spoke on the motion. She then, or spoke on the order. She then made a request to call the question. Normally, we would proceed to a vote. I understand Counselor Davila's point of information. Because there are counselors that want to be heard, out of respect for all of you, and I do it for any one of you, we're going to call a recess, we're going to consult the rules, we're going to go from there. Counsel stands in recess. Members, I'm told we're back up and running. And the floor remains at this time with Counselor Davila. We are on the motion to refer this item to committee. The motion was made by Counselor Kern. Counselor Davila on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did Director Mahoney leave, or? Oh, he's still there. Okay. Director, before I say anything else, again, I thank you. And I will admit to you, if anybody knows me, they know that if I don't understand something, I'm going to ask questions. And honestly, sir, I am more confused now than 10 minutes later, ago, rather. I do not understand your answers. If I'm a supervisor, I will feel that I'm standing in front of the firing squad constantly. I will feel that a nuisance on my neck all the time. Now, a comment was made a little while ago about livelihoods. It is true. But this is also the livelihood. Now, again, I'm the first one that want the cops to be oversight. I'm the first one to say, we need to have a strong oversight, including supervisors. But I am uncomfortable, mainly because I don't understand what it is, the 90, 120 days. Because at some point, that has got to be a resolution. Cops deal with so many people a day that it will be a constant threat to them. I want to ensure and the cops to know that if you're a good cop in this city, we got your back. If you wear that badge with honor, and you do your job honorably, I got your back. If you are not doing the right thing, if you like to violate people's civil rights, then we will prosecute you accordingly. We will go after you. And so, you know, some people might say, well, you know, here we go again. You know, I understand that you should understand it. Well, no, it doesn't work that way. Maybe you understand it. Maybe some counselors here, I can see some of them do understand. I don't. And at the end of the day, we're talking about people's livelihood as well. Because those guys in the police department, the supervisors, have put in the sweat, the time and effort and the sweat for this city. So I'm going to ask you one more time, if, to see if you could please explain to me, if something happens to me today, and I don't say anything until February 14th, which is 90 days, when does, when does my ability to bring a charge against that supervisor expires? Assuming that it's not a felony. I know felony is a whole different thing. There is no expiration date after the 90 days. But if we are not aware of it, if the, not we, but if the Springfield Police Department is not aware of it, it can be brought at any time. However, it may not be upheld by an arbitrator if discipline were imposed. So if it's very stale, if it's very old, they may not, they may investigate it still, but there may not be any charges that could stick to the officer. But there's no additional timeline in any of the contracts beyond the ones that we've already discussed tonight. The 90 for the supervisors and the 120 for the patrol officers. So you're saying that it's 90 for the supervisors and 120? That's the current, right now, that is currently what we have. 90 for supervisors, 120 for patrol. Why the difference between the two? Well, it was, it was 90 for both, and the police patrolmen had a very narrow 60-day window to actually have the charges brought forward. That language was changed to the language that we currently have in the contract, which says, if we weren't aware of it, we can bring it later. You know, it's the burdens on us to show why we, why we went beyond either the 90 or the 120. That burden is on us. And an arbitrator could say, it's not good enough, you can't bring it forward. Right. You know, I understand that all we want here is to accept or reject it. I understand that. I understand that this was a dawn between the city and the police union, excuse me, the supervisors' union. I get that. But I don't feel comfortable with this particular thing. And so, at least on this particular item, Mr. President, I will be voting in favor of the motion to send to committee. Thank you, Director Mahoney. Thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. We're going to go to Counselor Kern at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Counselor Davila, I don't blame you, because I was confused as well, along with you, with the explanation. If, in '91, the offense is discovered, I think, under the language as before the council, they would have a pretty good defense. And I guess, Mike, again, the point of the, the discussion is, why not agree with the DOJ recommendation of the 120 days? If I can remind my colleagues, this contract, as it comes due in January, I mean, we may not have a resolution to this for another three years, because there's no, there's no telling that the next contract will be agreed to. So we might be stuck with this 90-day language for the next three or four years coming. I guess my question to Attorney Mahoney is, if we do put this into committee, and the Union, the supervisors' union, were to agree with it, could we, could the city come to an agreement of increasing this language to 120 days in the interest of transparency? You stated that this was the DOJ's, one of the most important points that DOJ is looking for. You stated that you're looking for it. If we put this to committee, and there was an agreement before we sign off on this, could we, could we increase this 90-day period to 120?
Well, I didn't say this was the most important, one of the most important points for the DOJ. The DOJ's settlement agreement with the city is 69 pages long. This is a point, and when we looked at it, we had, what we identified for Labor Relations were nine points that we needed to negotiate with our two units. And when we looked at the nine points, knowing we can only bring five forward, this did not make our top five. With that being said, this, this piece is not even in play right now. But it will be in play the next time we go to the table for negotiations with the police supervisors. And the DOJ's language was not 120 days. I believe it was an unlimited number of days, and we came down with a compromise with the IBPO at the 120. I think that's how we agreed, because we knew we weren't going to get the full unlimited time period to bring charges against someone. So we expanded the period a little bit. I'm hoping that's satisfactory to the compliance evaluator. And if it's not, we're going to have to come back to the table again on it. But.
My question is, if it was sent, if this is sent to committee, could we change it to 120 days?
You can't change, you can't change the award at all. You could negotiate something other than the award, and then pull this from the council. But you can't change the award itself.
This particular, this particular provision, though, if there was an agree?
This position, this, there is, this is not a provision in the award. This, this does not, whatever we've been talking about in the 90 and 120, that is not part of this award. That is not a thing that is in front of this council. That's a separate issue that can come up down the road. And you could negotiate something completely different from, from this award, and say, we're going to pull this award from the council, and we're just going to make a settlement agreement on other terms. But you can't change this, because it's not in the award.
Could you provide this clarification? Would you be able to do a side letter on this award with this language, increasing this language at this point?
Sure. If the, if the Union wanted to do a side letter to increase, to make, make this concession to the city, we can do that.
In, so if we send it to committee, we could do a side letter if the Union were in agreement?
Yep. I would, I would just express to the council.
Is that yes or no? I mean, is that, is that possible?
Well, anything is possible in Labor Relations, but I would point out, I would point out, I would point out to the council, I would point out to the council that since this award has been issued, there has not been any, you know, overtures as far as, let's make a different deal. That has not occurred.
But that's not my question. I can see why your negotiations take three years.
Thank you.
The question is, if there's a side letter, and this goes to committee, and the Union is in agreement, could we increase the 90 days to 120? And we have the committee meeting within two weeks. Could we do that?
The Union can sign a side letter tomorrow about that. Yes.
I don't know. Mr. President, is it possible? Well, that's the reason I would suggest to my colleagues why we would send it to committee. We have the opportunity now to move this from 90 to 120 days. If we simply allow it to take the course of negotiations, it could be like four years before this comes back. And the name of the game, the reason why we want it to 120 days, is in the interest of transparency. So I really do think that moving this to committee is not, is simply adding two weeks to this negotiation. I actually think it's really integral and at the heart of the negotiation, because we really do have an opportunity to move the 90-day window if the Union is in agreement with a side letter to 120 days. And I think that makes a lot of sense. It'll be in alignment with the patrolmen, the patrolmen's union.
They could also.
So again, I would support, I would support the motion, move it to committee. Because my idea is, once we get into committee, we could ask the Union to agree to up the 90-day statute of limitations to 120 days. And I think that's a lot more equitable. It's a lot more transparent, and I think it's really in line with the Department of Justice wants. And I think it's in line with the residents of Springfield want.
You could, you could also have that done without going to committee by just having conversations with the Union between the administration and the Union after this, if they want to talk about a side letter. But I wouldn't delay, I wouldn't, I would not delay this any longer than it is.
I don't think a two-week delay is unreasonable. You haven't, you haven't been able to get a contract signed in two years. And I can see by your somewhat combative tone and confusing tone, why? I mean, I would suggest, again, there's a motion on the floor to put it to committee. Before I, before we proceed with the motion, Mr. President, I would like to hear from the Union president there in the chamber and ask, would, would the Union president object to considering increasing the 90-day statute of limitations to 120 days?
Captain Keenan, if you wish to be heard, you have the floor at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. The Union is always ready and willing to do business with the city in issues of transparency. So if that's what the council needs, we're certainly willing to sit down and do that.
Counselor Kern?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Kern. Thank you, Captain Keenan. There are many hands up. And I am going to recognize all of you. Counselor Allen has not spoken yet. And so on the motion, Counselor Allen will be recognized. Counselor Edwards has also not spoken yet. So we're going to go on the motion to Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Edwards.
Thanks, Mr. President. I really want to call the question. I think we've been talking about this long enough. Let's call the question. Vote on the committee thing. It's, it's 9:30. We've been talking about it for an hour. We aren't any farther along than we were an hour ago. So I'd like to call the question, please.
Counselor Allen has made a motion to call the question. That motion was seconded by Counselor Whitfield. We'll now vote on the motion to call the question. This is a motion to call the question on the motion to committee. It requires nine votes to pass. If it passes, debate will be ended, and we will refer, proceed immediately to the vote on the motion to committee. So at this time, on calling the question, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On calling the question, Counselor Walsh.
Counselor Brown has a question. Counselor Brown?
No, this is not on the actual send in to committee.
Correct. This is on calling the question. If you vote yes, you are voting to end debate. If you vote no, you are voting to continue debate on the motion. On the question, please call the roll.
On calling the question, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes. The votes are sufficient. The question is called. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to refer this order to committee. A yes vote will refer the matter to committee. A no vote will return us to debate on the petition. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the referral to committee.
On the motion to move to committee, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
No.
No, Counselor Perez, absent. Counselor Whitfield?
No.
No, Counselor Govan?
No.
No, Counselor Allen?
No. Excuse me, no.
No, Counselor Brown?
No.
No, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
No.
No, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes. The vote is tied. And Counselor, I've never had to. And counsel, I've never had to do this before because this has never happened to me. But I have to refer to the rules relative to the tie unless, unless, unless former Council President Fenton knows off the top of his head, or Counselor Hurst, in the event of a tie.
Majority of the council, not those present.
It's a dead tie.
It's a majority of the council, not those present.
So there's 12 of us present.
It loses.
No.
Six of us have voted to refer to committee, and six of us have voted to not refer to committee.
Right. But it's a majority of those counselors, not those present. So there's 13 counselors, a majority of seven.
So the motion fails.
The motion fails.
The motion fails.
Yes.
It's getting late, folks. The motion has failed. At this time, we will return to debate on the order. And the order is to approve the arbitration agreement. On approving the arbitration agreement, Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having a lot of knowledge on internal affairs and how the police actually go through the process, what individuals have to understand, and if I may, I want to, if you can... Just so, you know, some of my colleagues would understand. So basically, if eight months from now, a year from now, I did something that warranted an investigation that still went beyond that 90 days, it would go into a certain area where they would investigate to see if they had enough information to prosecute. So say there was a rogue cop who was robbing people at gunpoint, and they have him on camera. And then a year later, if they have enough evidence to actually persecute it, and it's egregious enough, they will do so. A lot of times, if an individual comes across a situation with a police officer, they're usually going to notify the necessary people within that amount of time. So that 90 days, that 120 days, it means absolutely, it means a little bit, if they did something a year from now, and it warranted an investigation from IAU, would they, would they not investigate it?
They're going to investigate it.
And the individual could get in trouble. Could they, or could they not?
They could, yes.
So what we have to understand is, we're talking about, if I want to introduce, see, what we're doing now is, there are people who, I don't know, might want to work on not getting hit by horses. That might have been one of the 1,000 things in there. They only picked a few. They could have got to, there's a lot of good issues. So this wasn't even brought up. This isn't on this thing today. We're not talking about, I don't know, cops at the basketball, when we might need cops there to do, we're not talking about that. We're not talking about 90 days, we're not talking about that. We're only talking about today, the five things out of a trillion that these individuals negotiated. And once again, the 90 days, the 120 days, that isn't even on the table. There's other issues that they brought up at this particular point. Okay? And, and like I said, they can always, always bring up prosecution if there is enough evidence to do so. And usually, majority of the time, if it's that atrocious, and they find out, they still will prosecute, correct?
They could still bring charges and...
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brown, on the approval. Counselor Whitfield?
So Counsel Curran brought up some information that I wasn't quite aware of. I did not realize that if we did go to committee, that we would be able to renegotiate the terms. I thought, based on what we were told, that when it went to mediation, arbitration, that it was 100% final, and nothing could be done to change the contract. So I think we kind of like missed our window of opportunity to discuss, you know, I went to the bathroom and thought about it, some of the changes that we could actually really still make in the contract. I didn't realize that that could still happen. I thought once they went to arbitration and it was decided on the five issues that it was done. So can you repeat to me how you can still negotiate changes in the contract? Or is based on arbitration, everything final?
So this is an arbitration, award, and decision. This is final, subject to your funding it. If you fund this, this is the contract for the next four years. If it's not funded, we would go back to negotiate, and we would try to come up with something else, or we may end up in a different procedure in front of DLR, Department of Labor Relations. But this is, this is the process. This is, this is the closure mechanism, is what we call it in our, in our field. This is the closure mechanism for police and fire cases. So you go through negotiation, mediation, interest arbitration, and you get a decision. And then it's binding on us, it's binding on the union, subject to funding by the council. And if you vote it up, that's the deal for four years. You get those police reform issues that we've talked about, they're done. But we're going to go back to the table anyways in January and start a whole second round or another round for FY '25, '26, et cetera.
Because it goes from 2020 to '24.
This would cover FY '21 to '24. Those years will be done and wrapped up, and then we move on to the next, the next round.
Now, if we, if we had put this in committee, and we had a discussion, and you had a discussion with the officers, we could still change the 2020 to '24 contract to 120 days.
So with all due respect, the committee doesn't get to negotiate anything.
I'm saying you and the union.
And we have been at that since 2020. I don't think that's going to change what we're, what we're doing today. Just being honest about it.
But just to answer the question, it could?
Anything can happen, yes, yes. Anything can happen.
But when do you start your next negotiations? Like, is it January? Is it March?
The next, the next cycle could be started in January, and those issues that we didn't resolve here, the city will be bringing them back. And the issues that the union didn't resolve, they're going to want to bring those back too. So things that both sides didn't get in this thing, we're going to, I'm sure they're going to come back, and we're going to talk more about.
I think we had an opportunity to do something when we were sending it to committee, but right now, I think that they need to get paid. I'm sorry, I just can't go no other way. And I'm going to move the question.
Mr. President?
A motion has been made to move the question. The question was, the motion was made by Counsel Whitfield. It was seconded by Counsel Govan. We are proceeding to a vote to move the question, subject first to the point of order called by Counsel Dabila, but if it's not a point of order, I'm going to call it out of order. Counsel Dabila?
Yes, I could be mistaken, Mr. President, but I do believe this is a very important subject. My understanding of the rules is that if you speak on the issue, that person cannot call the question.
That is not, I think that me and Counsel Dabila have actually had this debate before, and I think that we checked on it, and I do think that you can call the question.
You are the parliamentarian, sir, but I do, I do stick by the belief that if you speak on the question, on the issue, sir, you cannot call the question, but you are the parliamentarian, not me, sir.
The motion was made to call the question. Counsel Whitfield made the motion. Counsel, Counsel Curran? Do you have a point of information, Counsel Curran?
Just, my, I would oppose the motion to move the question. I would actually ask Counsel Whitfield to consider withdrawing that so I could put a motion to revisit the committee. Because to answer her question, yes, at committee, we can change it from 90 to 120 days.
Counsel Curran, I apologize, but you're out of order. The motion was made to call the question. I understand Counsel Dabila's point, and, you know, for that reason, I'm going to call a two-minute recess. I'm going to consult the rules, and we're going to determine whether Counsel Whitfield's motion to call the question was in order. She did speak on it. I understand Counsel Dabila's point of order. Because there are multiple other counselors that do want to be heard, for that reason, I'm going to call a recess, and me and the clerk are going to consult the rules, and then we will return with a ruling. I am sorry, Counsel Edwards, but we cannot hear any further debate because of the order...
Can I add a question regarding the need for the... For you to take more, a request for more clarity when you do meet with the clerk?
Counsel Edwards on the point of information. Counselor Edwards.
Okay, a point of information. When you meet with the clerk, can you come back and be prepared to answer the question of whether or not we can revisit the motion to send back to committee? Is that an appropriate question, request?
It is not.
Of you as the parliamentarian?
It is not. And again, I'm doing this because of the order of what happened. So just to be clear, Counsel Whitfield spoke on the motion. She then, or spoke on the order. She then made a request to call the question. Normally, we would proceed to a vote. I understand Counsel Dabila's point of information because there are counselors that want to be heard out of respect for all of you, and I do it for any one of you. We're going to call a recess, we're going to consult the rules, we're going to go from there. Counsel stands in recess. Counsel will be in session. Counsel Dabila? Rule 31 of the City Council rules state that the previous question shall be in the form of the motion to move the question. It shall be admitted when demanded by two-thirds of the majority members in quorum are present and until decided, shall preclude all amendments and debate of the main question. And after the adoption of the previous question, the sense of the council shall short forthwith be taken upon amendment, report by committee upon all pending amendments in their order, and then upon the main question. Our rules do not mention anything relative to the request that you made. However, when our rules are silent, they defer to Roberts' rules. The clerk and I looked at Roberts' rules. We did not find anything pertaining to the statement that you made relative to individuals not being able to speak. However, regardless of that, our rules explicitly speak to moving the question and do not say that you cannot move the question after you have spoken. And so with that, I rule that Counsel Whitfield may move the question. And I do apologize to the audience for the delay. However, given that this was a point of great debate and contention, I felt that it was important to ensure that we proceed with as much accuracy as possible. With that, we will now return to debate on the order on passage.
I would like to withdraw the motion to move the question.
Counsel Whitfield has withdrawn the motion to move the question.
Sorry.
Mr. President?
Can I make a different motion?
With the motion withdrawn, we are now returning to debate on the order. If you are an individual who would like to speak, Counsel Curran, I hear you. If you are an individual who would like to speak, I would ask that you raise your hand at this time if you would like to speak on the order.
Is it still my turn?
The floor is clear. You withdrew your motion. I am now going to recognize counselors who wish to be heard, starting with you.
Okay.
But then we are going to go to Counsel Brown. Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry for the confusion, guys, but I want to send this to committee. Make a motion to send it to committee.
Counsel Whitfield has made a motion to refer this item to committee, was seconded by Counsel Dabila. Is there any further discussion on the motion to committee?
Call the question.
Seeing no further, is there any further discussion on the motion to committee? Seeing no further discussion on the motion to committee at this time without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to committee. A yes vote will refer the item to committee.
On the motion to committee, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez, absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
No.
No, Counsel Brown?
No.
No, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The matter will be referred to the General Government Committee. Madam Clerk, is there any further business properly brought before this body?
There is not.
Seeing none, we will stand adjourned.